You are live.
I'm going to call this committee the whole meeting to order of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with adoption of the agenda. By Matt Cherry, seconded by Lee Devlin. Adoption of the minutes from the regular committee of the whole meeting from October twelfth. Lee Devlin, seconded by. Tim Saperner. Adoption of the minutes from the special committee meeting of October twenty-sixth. Tim Saperner. Seconded by Lee Devlin. And adoption of the minutes from the special budget committee, the whole meeting from November ninth. Lee Devlin, seconded by Matt Cherry. Is there any business arising from the committee of the whole meeting from October twelfth? See none? Is there any business arising from the meeting on the twenty-sixth of October? I see none, and business arising from the budget committee meeting of November ninth? I see none as well. We'll move straight ahead to bylaws. Seven A, bylaw notice adjudication system. Do we have a presentation?
We do not have a presentation, but I can answer any questions. I can speak briefly on that and answer any questions if there are any. Yeah, so this, this is the introduction to the bylaw. This is further to the previous endorsement that council gave back in February regarding adding the city rebel stuff to the bylaw adjudication process. So we have been added as officially as of October eighth. We were officially added to the registry. And this bylaw is now to enable the use of the bylaw adjudication system as well as the associated amendments to the policy, our bylaw enforcement policy. And then included within the bylaw is the potential for a cost sharing agreement with other municipalities as a way to split the adjudication costs. So in front of the by, in front of you is the bylaw, the amendments to the policy as well as. Oh, sorry, yeah, just the, the bylaw draft report as well, a general report on what the bylaw is regarding. And then. Any of the track changes? Is there any questions regarding that one? Go ahead.
Thanks through the chair. Thanks for having the track changes that made it very easy to follow. My question is. Is the five hundred dollar amount? The highest we're allowed to go?
Through the chair, yes. For, for bylaw offense notices, yes. Five hundred is the cap.
Per offense?
Per offense, yes.
Per day?
Per day.
Okay, let's leave it at that then.
Could I cancel it, Governor?
Through the chair, I see that there is a recommended motion in this report. You're looking for the committee to recommend counsel that motion today, I would assume?
Yes.
Perfect, and I will move that the committee of the whole recommends counsel, the bylaw offense notice bylaw number twenty-three seventy be brought forward and considered for first, second, and third reading on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and that the C A O and corporate officer be authorized to execute the bylaw notice dispute education registry agreement with partner municipalities.
And Counsel Valmore, second, if you'd like to speak to it? Counsel Alanda?
Sorry, I got caught out there a little bit. The. The motion was tabled much more quickly than I had anticipated. I have a lot of questions, so I was just hoping to give other counselors an opportunity to speak first to this. I think in the interest of clarity, it would be good to have sort of an overview verbally of why we are doing this and what, what it is about and what prompted us to do this. And then do you have more specific questions such as the notes that the provincial government provided permission in October for this? I didn't quite understand that part. And then I also, I'm hoping to have some clarity on how this bylaw works in conjunction with the existing M T I system. One of the, one of the things that was raised during the recent announcement from the provincial government and Bill thirty-five on S T R regulations was increasing M T I fees. So I'm trying to get some clarity on how these two work together or what this does and doesn't change as a result of that, so.
Through the chair, yes. So the, the big difference between, I'll start with the big difference between the adjudication process and municipal ticketing is obviously there is a limitation on the total fine amount. The adjudication process is a simpler process. It is no longer going through a provincial court, which would be an M T I would be if it is disputed. It is held through a dispute process is held through the provincial court system. This is done through the adjudication process, which is done in-house. If we're part of another municipality or regional district, we would be doing it as a group. The. One of the key differences between them as well as the ways that you're able to serve the notice. So through the bylaw offense notice adjudication, you can leave the notice on an individual's car. You can post it on their house. You can mail it to them. A municipal ticket, one of the biggest limitations with it is that it does have to be physically served to the individual that are the offense that, that completed the effects. So this would allow bylaw staff a lot more flexibility when it comes to issuing those parking tickets. I know this is one of the biggest challenges that we do face is obviously parking. Parking is one of those challenging ones to be issuing a ticket for municipal ticketing versus the bylaw offense notice. The bylaw offense notice, we can leave that ticket on the car, whereas with the municipal ticket, we typically would have to leave a notice on the car saying please contact us. And then when they are contacted, it's either a warning or we'd have to physically serve them when they did contact us and they came to the office. So this will empower staff and give staff some additional resources to be able to address parking concerns as well as some of the short-term rentals as you've addressed as well. Though bylaw adjudication processes is starting to become more and more popular with municipalities as a tool for enforcement and gaining compliance as it is a little bit more lenient as far as, again, terms of service, the dispute processes. There is also the ability for a screening officer, which is included in this bylaw. It appoints a screening officer, which allows you to enter into a compliance agreement for designated offenses that are allowed to be entered in. So instead of going through mediator or the court system, this does allow an option for individuals to then go through the screening officer to determine if the ticket stands or if there's means that they could enter into this compliance agreement and then what the terms of that compliance agreement would be. So on one of your other points there, as far as the, with Bill thirty-five, that does not apply to bylaw offense notices. So at this point, there has been no legislation capable to increase the fines for bylaw offense notices. Those will remain at five hundred. It is something that staff has asked of the province as if that is being considered. We are still waiting for a response on that one. The municipal ticketing bylaw will need to be amended to, when that legislation is passed to allow for the increase to three thousand dollar fine. Staff will be reviewing that bylaw to determine which offenses need to be increased or added. That three thousand dollar cap actually will apply to all offenses. The legislation is being amended to allow that, that cap of three thousand to apply to any effect. It is not limited to short-term rentals as was originally alluded to.
Just an extra private question through the chair, if I may. So these two policies will work in parallel to each other. So by law enforcement staff have the opportunity to go to the M T I system if they so choose or if it makes a lot more sense, such as an issue where terms of service are difficult. You know, like a parked car where who knows where the owner is and the plates are from out of province. They can use that option. They can use either one, whatever they choose appropriate. So this is an additional tool, not a, not changing in any way our existing tools. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that, that is correct. It's meant to be an additional resource. It is not one to replace one or the other. We do still intend on utilizing both systems. There, there's obviously limitations on each of them, so it is just to have an additional tool for the bylaw officers.
Counsel Jerry?
Through the chair, I just have a question about. I don't know if I can, having trouble figuring out the proper terminology. So with the adjudication system, be able to put a ticket on someone's car or someone's door. What do we have or what does this? What opportunity we have to collect? For example, if someone doesn't pay their parking ticket, will it affect them being able to get car insurance until it's paid or renew their license or anything like that? So that there's actually some sort of enforcement down the line that they don't just avoid the ticket paying it generally?
So through, through chair, the process for collection is similar to municipal ticketing. We would have to either send it to collections or we do have the option to go through a payment hearing, which is similar to municipal ticketing, which is where we'd go through the court system or request a payment hearing. And then that individual is required through the court system to then pay that and or enter into a payment.
Okay, just a follow-up. If you were leaving a ticket on a door for, let's say, an S T R offense, would be the similar process? What do you see being faster in collecting fines or for, let's say, an S T R or parking ticket above those two options?
Through the chair, that'd be hard to, I'd be guessing if I was to answer that because obviously it's down to the individual. So when we leave a notice on a window or sorry, on a, on a house for, say, an S T R, we'd be following up with a letter saying detailing out we've left this notice. You have this amount of time to dispute it, laying out the process that is included on the ticket itself. And then the payment options, again, we'd be pursuing the payment options either through collections or through the payment hearings.
Okay, thanks. The reason I was asking is I just want to make sure that we're able to close up as much as the loopholes that have been exploited over the last however-so-long with this policy. Thanks.
Counsel Alanda?
Yes, through the chair, yeah. And to address, again, to address that question in another wording, I, I have been around long enough to remember when we implemented the M T I system here. And it was at the time under a different, different. Different people, most of different things. It was my understanding at the time that that would be a bit of a panacea for some of the issues that we're facing, including short-term rental enforcement issues. However, that has not turned out to be. So to ask more spirit of the law as opposed to a letter of the law question here is, does staff have confidence? You know, I, I'm supportive of this, moving forward, but does staff have confidence that this will be effective in resolving the issues that we are facing and lead to the outcomes that we are trying to get through the enactment of this new bylaw?
Through the chair, again, this, that would be a speculation as far as if I was to say that this is the fix-all. Unfortunately, there is no one fix for this issue. This is a large issue. We are hopeful that this adjudication process in combination with Bill thirty-five and the resources that are coming with Bill thirty-five will help with this, but it is a process. It does take quite a bit of time. Every file will be an individual process of its own. Investigation processes are still the same, so unfortunately, I, I can't say that this is going to be the one fix-all for everything, but this does provide additional resources to be able to, again, gain that compliance through all of the means. Specifically, it, it'll be a large resource for those out-of-town owners as well.
If I can piggyback that. To the chair, does this or is there a way that would allow? Let's go with this. Does this policy allow for fines to be registered on title? For non-payment? Through the chair.
Through the chair. Yeah, that would be, I would have to confirm with that one. This will be able to confirm.
Neither do I.
Yeah.
But I want to confirm. Okay. Let's do that.
I have a couple of comments. I'm very much in support of this adjudication system. One, a couple that I do have issues with is five point zero one, park after hours, six point zero five and six point zero four, residing or camping overnight. With these ones through the M T I system, you would be able to serve these tickets directly to people. If they are camping in their vehicles, they would be in them. I could just see through the adjudication system and how those fines are set at five hundred dollars versus all other parking infractions set at one hundred dollars that that might be disproportionately used to try to persuade people to be off the streets in their campers.
Would you like to speak now?
Sure. So through, through chair, we are, obviously, this isn't meant to be the one fix-all. This is, this bylaw and the fine amounts that are included in it are reflective similar to the M T I bylaw as well. There was minor changes and additions to this one, however, again, it was limited. There is no set that each officer has to or will be issuing one or the other. As far as. Yeah, the use of adjudication versus municipal ticketing will be left up to the discretion of the officer. However, our processes for enforcement will remain the same as what we are currently operating.
Counsel Jerry? And Counsel Saperner?
Just to the chair, to Mr. Gibbs. Correct or wrong, this, this allows for an up to five hundred dollar fine. It doesn't set all fines at five hundred dollars. Okay. Thanks.
Counsel Saperner?
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and just make a note that on page twenty, it looks like item three, two and three dash three are both one of the same. On the bylaw offense notice, bylaw number two-three-seven-zero, page twenty, permanent insect infestation, five hundred. And then same, same for three point three. And then maybe, maybe a comment is what I hope to see is more of a equal enforcement across the board. Because it's my observation that we seem to be very arbitrary in our enforcement policies. So I'd like to see it more evenly applied. I can give examples, but I think everybody knows what I'm talking about.
Any other questions for Counselors? Counsel Alanda?
Your worship, through the chair, sort of a comment slash question for staff. So we're looking at the bylaws proposed as well as amendments to the policy, which are presented in track changes here. And so this will be anticipated for, so right now we're discussing any possible revisions prior to adoption. So suggestions and input. Today, what we will be voting on for members of the gallery is, is not adopting this, but just getting it to counsel for first consideration. Which I support. I wanted to make a comment and get feedback from staff on this, and I, and I think it's important. Has been an important part of my holistic understanding of key challenges or key realities for bylaw enforcement. And that is that the, the level of service we have versus the expectation of the level of service we have are not, are often not the same thing. And the limitation is cost. Bylaw enforcement has never, and I like to repeat this statistic, never had more than ten percent cost recovery. That was years ago, that was presented to me, and in a sense, it's just a pure straight cost to taxpayers for the level of service. So we could go hire four more bylaw officers, you know, next week if we wanted to, but that's going to cost us half a million dollars or more when you talk about salary, training, equipment, vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, legal compliance. It's, it's not a, it's not an easy job and it's not cheap to do. So, you know, I would have that overarching caveat on everything related to bylaw enforcement. I know, for example, when I first arrived here, I walked out in front of my house and there was somebody had locked their German shepherd in a car on a thirty-five degree day and it freaked me out. And so all of a sudden, this became my issue going forward and there was no bylaw enforcement officer available. So you made, you know, the realization that, you know, we don't have, you know, it's not like nine-one-one where they're going to show up. It's a limited service and it's costly to taxpayers. This is an attempt to, to help tax, or help bylaw enforcement officers perform their duties and be more effective and also close some loopholes that are exploited or utilized or de facto utilized by people to avoid compliances with their bylaws. A couple of comments I wanted to make are, and I just, through the chair, am I wrong on any of, any of that statements? Or am I, do I solve it right or am I out of date here? Is that more or less? Yeah, okay. So one of the concerns I had was wording about new additional wording in the policy manual, not the bylaw manual, related to neighborhood, neighbor disputes. You know, I'm not stuck on this, but I find that a lot of times these acrimonious disputes are a result of our inability due to resource levels to enforce issues down there. So I don't have any suggestion and I'm not going to call for a change today, but I just want to encourage some meditation on that prior to it coming to counsel for, for adoption. Oftentimes I find people kind of, you know, revert to by, see a violation that affects them, ask for it to be resolved and then it's not resolved and they, and then it becomes a, it becomes a neighborhood dispute and I want to avoid that as much as possible. So I would just be cautious as a blanket statement of, of people's, you know, ongoing concerns not being addressed due to that. Secondly. Sorry, where else was I looking here in the policy?
Counsel, what page are you on?
That was in the policy manual, so I think it was on the first page or second page there. Sorry, I just navigated away on my internet, it's a little slow over here. So yeah, so I guess, you know, that was one of the concerns and, you know, moving forward, and this is not a motion or advice, just a, a comment that as part of our ongoing effort to redouble communications and put more focus on this, I feel that at one point soon we should, you know, at, at the leisure of the bylaw enforcement services department, maybe talk a little bit more about the, the challenges the department faces. So we could, we could have, you know, two-minute, you know, three-minute response times if we paid for it, but that is just up to taxpayers. And one thing that is not true is that if we just issue a whole, you know, like tickets pay for the service. It's not that case. And I think the reluctance from counsel is we don't want to, you know, many people or the philosophy over the years has been, we don't want to go to a system where we're, you know, if you park for two minutes too long, you're getting a ticket right there because we're on top of you, that becomes a predatory system. And I don't want to live in a community like that, but we do need tools like this to get compliance. That's my thoughts.
Any more comments around the table? Okay, then I will call the question. All those in favor? Passed? Is anyone want to put a second motion on?
Moves out the proposed amendments to bylaw enforcement policy B two dated November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Be adopted, or sorry, I will move that we recommend to counsel.
And second for that motion? Cherry? Any discussion on the matter? Okay, then I'll call the question. All in favor? And it's passed. Okay, we'll move on to staff reports. Nine A, snow removal policy. Director Black, do you have a presentation?
I would not have a presentation, however, I would suggest that the man that really did this report and the policy would be more than happy to stand up and provide some background for, for counsel.
So through the chair, I do not have a presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Two statements, just to begin. This policy review came about after the large snowfall that we had after, around Christmas last year in two thousand and twenty-two. And one of the directions from counsel was to review this policy. So on review of the policy, we found that there were a few issues with the old policy. It was dated, there were a few. It wasn't basically as good as it should be. So we've updated that policy and there are a few items that need to be discussed. So we brought it here for discussion.
Awesome, thank you. Any comments for Counselors? Counsel Alanda?
Your worship, through the chair, the report contains numerous options. I was wondering if I could ask a question to staff through the chair about just a bit more specificity on the kind of direction you're looking for and is this focused on the items highlighted in red?
Oh, through the chair, yeah. The highlighted items are ones that we wanted to make counsel aware of. We are one of the only communities that provides these services in British Columbia. So we want to make you, counsel, aware of the costs and whether they needed to be changed. At this point, we're not recommending any changes, but we want to be, make you aware of the services that we're providing that others aren't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could, could we have staff highlight what those are, what the implications are? Of those things that we do that are not commonly found in other communities?
Ms. Russo, are you able to bring that up?
It's, it, through the chair, it's here, it's here in, you know, those couple, or here in writing, but I think just for clarity.
I'd be happy to just highlight those and speak on those. So the first one that we have is the windrows that are in driveways specifically. The windrows in the streets, that's something of a different nature. But the windrows at the end of driveways that are created when we have the snow to the side is something that we're only one of two communities in D C that I can find that actually provides this service to its citizens or residents. Right now, we, we estimate it costs about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, per season to provide this service. The second one is the clearing of sidewalks. We do have a bylaw in place that outlines that all adjacent property owners are actually responsible for clearing sidewalks. And our previous policy stated that we assist with sidewalks right now. And so that's what we've been doing for years and years and years. Right now, it's, it's something that, again, not many other communities provide that service. They'll provide the attractions of the, the self-insanding, but they don't provide the clearing that's usually up to residents of the community.
Counsel Cherry?
Your worship, through the chair. Outside of downtown, how many sidewalks do we have that you guys are finding clearing? And the, the follow-up question is going to be is what are the cost implications of doing those?
So through the chair, the schedule B in the package there will show all these sidewalks that we're currently clearing. And it is pretty much every sidewalk in town is what we do. So there are a lot of adjacent property owners that would be responsible there outside of downtown. The cost implications are as high as the driveways. We're estimating around two hundred thousand dollars per year in cost to clear these sidewalks.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the table? Counsel Saperner?
So through the chair, to Mr. Manta, just to be clear, so what you're looking for from counsel is to remove the responsibilities of removing, of clearing the windrows from private driveways and shoveling of sidewalks, is that correct?
Sir, through the chair, we're not asking for any changes at this point. We just want to make sure that counsel is aware of the, the options out there.
Yeah, I know that this has come through the public infrastructure committee and just whether we want to adjust the service level that we have right now. I know it's challenging as contracts are already out for this winter season. So these aren't really changes we would be looking to implement right now, but to kind of start the conversation about the consideration of if we are wanting to change the service levels going into next winter.
Thank you. My, I think, if I may, through the, my overall concern is, you know, with increasing tax, like one, you know, the, the windrows. My concern is with the elderly removing the snow from, from their windrows. I mean, whether that's going to be a possibility. And then my other concern is the fact that we seem to be continuously raising taxes, which is understandable given the economy. But at the same time, decreasing services doesn't really sit well with me, so that's my comment. Thank you.
And if I may, your worship to counsel. We have been doing these processes for many years now. They are not consistent with our bylaw. We are not suggesting that change occur for this year, but the policy needed to be updated to minimize our exposure to liability, especially for trip and falls on. especially for trip and falls on snow and ice. So that is the, the primary reason this comes, is coming to you at this time, so that we are protecting ourselves from those risks. The options presented in the report for the policy are contrary to what are in our bylaws. So next year, we would like to bring this back to council for additional consideration, but aware that we are performing these services in and above what we're likely required to do and in and above what other communities do. We're not asking for any change at this time, but the discussion must be had to provide guidance to staff from the council level as to what direction we want to move in addressing these items. Counselor Saban raised a, a particularly strong point, in my opinion, is that we've got a lot of snow, it is heavy snow. We've got a community that is aged in many respects, um, and it is a challenge. Do we want to continue the process that we have now? Or do we want to find another way or a lesser way? We're not asking for discussion, or maybe we are asking for discussion. However, we can't ask for guidance at this time. And again, the contracts are let for this year. So we don't anticipate any changes to operations right now. But for next year, depending on council's direction and guidance, we will make those changes to the budget and the finance department will then modify the budgets in accordance with that guidance.
Counselor Orlando?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, uh, through the chair. Uh, thank you, Director Black, for your feedback on this. Um, uh, in the spirit of, uh, providing feedback, I don't support reducing any services, uh, as they stand. I feel that off, operating these, uh, you know, uh, public works does an awesome job. And I know it must be a, a kick in the teeth when, when you have a, a, a bad day and that's the only day that, uh, people notice or comment on. Uh, but anyways, um, due to a, a number of extenuating circumstances, uh, however, uh, yeah, I don't support reducing the level of service. Uh, currently volunteer community groups help seniors, uh, uh, with snow removal on their property, uh, and, uh, above and beyond windrow removal. It's a big mobility issue for people, uh, and the most efficient way to do it is with, uh, a coordinated team and big machines. Um, we're going to offset these costs onto homeowners because you're going to have to go get a snow blower or, you know, get out there earlier in the morning to, to shovel it out. Um, secondly, the, uh, the sidewalk clearing routes, um, are, have been done for mobility reasons. Uh, so, um, there's a, uh, most, I think maybe half, I get a horse sense that half the people in the community are aware of this, especially downtown residents, and that we have a priority, uh, clearing system so that will help you walk, uh, into downtown, uh, if you follow the routes that are on this map. Uh, so, uh, big snow day, you know where to go. The, the, the small, uh, sidewalk plows will be clearing those things first thing. Uh, and that is, uh, really important, uh, for people who are walking to work, um, um, on those days. So yeah, so I don't, uh, support reducing the services. Um, it's gonna, it's either gonna happen, uh, another way and cost, uh, cost the homeowners funding or it's going to affect mobility issues for, for other people. And yeah, I think, uh, a lot of residents agree that snow removal does a great job here. And, uh, we, uh, have an efficient system and, uh, are great at it. Um, and, uh, certainly it's good to see the, the discussion going forward, uh, on, uh, making sure we, uh, uh, yeah, like overcome any, uh, any challenge, high-profile challenges. So, yeah.
Counselor Saban?
Given the fact, thank you, um, given the fact that we're not looking to make any changes for service for this winter, as contractors have been already awarded, I'm wondering if it would be more prudent for us at this time to just go ahead and table this report until a later time when we can discuss this, possibly in the spring or summer, looking at services moving forward?
Yes, there are recommendations in the package to continue this conversation for the 2025 budget.
Okay. Counselor Palmer?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So it seems to me that there's two issues. Uh, there's a staff issue or a, a processing issue of, uh, reducing the municipal exposure to liability. And if I'm hearing the director and manager correctly, that that's the reason, the main reason for recommendations of rescinding the current policy and implementing a new policy is to address, uh, those issues of liability. And then, uh, the second issue is on service levels, which is in the preview of council. And specifically what's been highlighted is, um, the level of service concerning, uh, driveway windrows and the clearing of sidewalks. And if I split those two part, those two items apart, the first on the windrows in front of driveways, which has a fairly high cost, um, however, it's a, a service that our community has provided for a very, very long time, um, and expects. And I think there would be quite a big outcry, uh, if we were to, um, reduce that service in the future. However, we may be facing an outcry on taxation in the future as well. And then it's these sort of balance of things. I, if the Public Infrastructure Committee, we had a dialogue around this, and I thought it was important to have the dialogue initially now because if we wait until summer of 2025, we'll be contracts let already and it'll be just deferred to 2026. And so if there was any appetite by council of reducing the services on windrows, we should start to fan that out and just see how, how angry the citizens get on that potential reduction of service. The, on the sidewalks, however, the clearing of sidewalks, if I'm understanding correctly, we are not providing a service that is consistent with the bylaws. So there is, the bylaws says you have to clear the sidewalk in front of you. We do this in the, the businesses in the downtown area. Um, so the question I have on that part is, are we going to continue at, at a policy level of providing that service? If that's the intention of council, then that bylaw should be fixed. And, uh, I suspect that we, uh, will, that the community wants that level of service, like in the downtown core. Are businesses going to need to, uh, remove snow or not? And there is already inconsistency on that. So I think that needs to be clarified, um, sooner rather than later. And that's, so those are, those are my comments. Thank you.
My question through the chair to Mr. Manson, have we explored the possibility of modifying the equipment? So for example, I think there's graders out there that have a drop arm. So that way, instead of creating a windrow, it kind of pushes it to the end of the driveway and then drop arm raises up and then it continues. If that, if I would explain that?
Yeah, yeah. So you're talking about, sort of, through the chair, um, uh, what Counselor, uh, Nurse is talking about is a, a gate system, uh, that's on the end of a, uh, a grade or, uh, wing. And, uh, unfortunately, our snow levels are too high, uh, for that. So we do, uh, we did look at it, it's kind of meant for the light fluffy stuff, uh, or really dry stuff, uh, at lower levels, and it works very well there. Uh, but the large wet snowfalls that we receive, it doesn't work very well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments around the table?
I guess I got to ask the tough one, Mike.
Yeah.
Might as well, for the benefit of the public and some of our partners in the room. We all know what happened last winter and during the Christmas season and, and the city issued a report. And one of the recommendations was to review the snow removal policy, which I'm glad to see has come forward. But can you, I guess, provide the public and, and the city some, I guess, some assurances that what happened last year most likely or hopefully will not happen again? Because I do get asked, people are respectful of stat holidays and it's the Christmas season and it's a time to be with family. But specifically from the business community and Mackenzie and the core, the core routes, what we call priority number one, um, can you provide any comment after reviewing the policy and some of these recommendations vis a vis the, the, uh, tough winter season that we endured, but specifically the Christmas season in the event that there's another main event and we're only limited with so much staff? I don't know if you can provide the public an, an update on those discussions? Or provide some, some clarity? Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, that's a, that, that event was, uh, definitely one that we haven't seen, uh, in many years. Uh, we did have a, a previous event like that, that was about, uh, 25 years ago, as, as far back as we had records. So it, it doesn't happen often. Uh, this new policy should help address, um, the routes and, and what is cleared and what is cleared, uh, in which priority sequence. So as you stated, you know, we have priority one, uh, and that is what we've had forever, just one priority. Um, now with this new policy, it identifies, uh, priority one, priority two, priority three. Uh, it also identifies when buildings and things like that are done and sidewalks are done. So, uh, it will provide more direction and the high priority items will be addressed first. Uh, so emergency services and, uh, business downtown core is always at the top of the list. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cherry?
Thanks, your worship, uh, through the chair to Mr. Manson. There is one section here I just want to clarify on. Uh, under definitions, you have roads, it includes asphalt roads and lands, but does not include gravel roads. Uh, I think you may need to get, uh, changing that in respects to, I believe it's Track Street, the secondary access, so you don't have to go around the tracks. It's not paved. Uh, it is on priority two or B. But, uh, I just want to make sure that, is there something I should know?
Well, my comment on what's happening is, um, uh, nothing, nothing nefarious. Um, Track Street is, uh, we're working currently, and this also came to the Public, uh, Infrastructure Committee, needing this last week, that, um, CP and, and the city are working on a license occupation that, uh, Track Street Secondary Access, Access onto Townley is technically only CP land. We don't have an easement or any sort of right of way over that. So staff are working on that. Um, and so we'll be coming forward with that. Uh, as far as the definition for Track Street, um, being grade, uh, dirt, um, and yes, it will be plowed. And, uh, we can certainly, uh, tweak the definition to accommodate that in that case.
Okay, I do appreciate that. Again, as everyone knows, it's our only access, it doesn't get blocked by a train. Uh, for safety purposes, I just want to make sure that that is continually plowed. Uh, and then my other question is, because I having trouble flipping back and forth between the 2000 policy and this one, uh, that there are changes, because I can't see the track, that match up to new bus routes. Because there was a change in service this year, I believe?
Yes.
In effect now?
Yeah, so through the chair, the, uh, the bus routes are identified as a priority one item. So then they, they will be, uh, uh, addressed in the, uh, the mapping.
Just looking for assurances that the new routes are, it's very difficult to flip between the two and make sure.
So the, um, just on the, on the policy, the old policy, it's, uh, being replaced. It's a complete replacement of that policy. So the run of track changes between the two because there is a significant difference between the two policies.
Perfect, thanks.
Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor Lucio. The, so we, we've talked about the liability issues, the, uh, service levels regarding windrows and, uh, sidewalks. I don't think we've made any, given any sort of direction that might go back to council. Uh, and we may through the policy. There is a third item, so further to the CAO's, uh, comments regarding the events in the winter. Um, and, uh, notwithstanding, uh, this past season, but every season there, uh, there's snowfall that happens on, on weekends. And, uh, the policy, if I'm reading both the old way and I think the new way, if I'm reading this correctly, is based on a five-day work week, Monday through Friday, and then there's a weekend. And, uh, so that's, uh, basically going back to the early days when, uh, Revelstoke was a, you know, purely a working town, uh, Monday through Friday, working town, and not necessarily ref- reflective of, uh, a recreation community, uh, in addition to that. And, uh, so that's one of the, I, my observation anyways, and I think the observation of a number of citizens is there is a different level of service on Saturdays and Sundays as opposed to, uh, um, Monday through Friday. And, uh, uh, it would be my opinion and certainly the opinion of some people that I talk to anyway, that really we should, as a, as we've become more of a, uh, recreational oriented community, that, uh, seven-day service, that there's the same kind of service on each of those days. Now there's significant, um, implications if we were to do that. But I think that's a dialogue that, uh, council should have. Uh, and, you know, we, we have a, a surge of, of visitors that, that come on weekends. Uh, and, uh, and if we have those heavy, uh, snowfall events that, uh, occur at that same time or on statutory holidays, where there's a, a substantially reduced, uh, workforce out there for snow removal, then that creates some of the problems, both real and perceived. Thank you. I don't know if any other, um, counselors have any comments on that?
Just to add to that, that is the message I received from the business community, that they do not recognize a five-day work week. That's, that's old Revelstoke, there is a new Revelstoke. We're open seven days, um, a week. And, um, we have tourists that come to our community in the wintertime and there's a minimum standard that's expected on these priority ones, as, as Mike talked about. And hopefully that'll be addressed. But just to echo what Counselor Palmer is saying, it was clear from the business community that it's more than just Monday to Friday, Revelstoke's more than that. And in the wintertime, it's, it's seven days a week and we're on, we're going full steam. And when there's an event on the weekend, we need to treat it like any other day and at least meet the priority one we can. We're not talking about residential, we're talking about the emergency and the downtown core. When we talk about weekend service, and that's something that, uh, was, uh, made very clear to me from the business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments around the table? Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, so, um, it seems like we're thinking and not sure what to do. So, um, I am going to put the recommendation on the table. Sorry, it's a long report and it's a long policy. And like Counselor Cherry is, finding it difficult to flip around. So I'm going to make a recommendation to council that policy PW10, Sidewalk and Streets Snow Removal 2000 be rescinded and that the proposed new PW10 Snow and Ice Control dated November 14th, 2023 be recommended for approval.
Do you have a second or a third? Counselor Devon? Any other discussion? Counselor Paul?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll speak to motion. Obviously this will go to council and maybe we'll have, uh, some dialogue from the community individuals councils and sometime, time to think about it a little bit more. Uh, this was, you know, just put on this report, um, agenda fairly recently. And we had some dialogue at the Public Infrastructure Committee regarding it. There is implications, um, for clarity, uh, because of contracts and, uh, other reasons for the, this upcoming snow season, which has already started, will be a very similar type of service level regardless. Um, this, I, uh, the, the policy as it stands, I, I think there is a number of things that could be fixed on it, but I think this, uh,
But I think this will help help staff and protect the city on liability issues so that maybe may arise come in the future. So I think it'd be the prudent thing to approve the policy for council to approve the policy as presented or maybe with some minor amendments.
Thank you. Any other comments around the table? Councillor Cherry?
Thanks for worship. I'm just curious, does any appetite to put this, these changes on Talk Revelstoke throughout this winter for public comment? Around the table?
I think it would be worthwhile. Once it's adopted by council.
Prior to being adopted?
I'd wait for the official formal adoption and then get it out there.
Yeah, I think if we talk about service level for next season.
It, through the mayor.
It's your account, it's your policy council, so.
So on the, on the, it's, it's an interesting thing, you know, how much do we invite public feedback before? I think largely for this to be just looking after the process concerns that staff have, that we should do this before going to Talk, Talk Revelstoke. At the same time, I think there's some really good merit when we start talking service levels. So is the, is the community comfortable with spending $400,000 or plus per year for doing driveway windrows? Or not? Is that too much? Four million dollars over 10 years for doing driveways? Is that, when we start to put that kind of context into the, the level of service? Are, do we want to force the bylaw that's currently out there for, and say businesses, if you don't you know, shovel your sidewalk in the morning, we're going to come and give you, what was it, $500 fine or something per day, you know, that you can reduce, reduce business taxation as a result of that. And so I think those are some good questions and I, I suspect that it, once that goes out to places like Talk Revelstoke or the Chamber was to have that dialogue with their members, we see probably an affirmation, I'm guessing an affirmation that they want to retain the service levels. And then when the citizens and the businesses complain about taxation, we'll, we'll remind them that they want high levels of service. I think that will be a good dialogue because there's a balancing act. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer? Thank you for worship. One request that I would like to suggest as an amendment is that this policy be adopted rather than approved.
I agree with that.
So that would be the motion for the next meeting. Because the motion that's in front of us right now is that this policy be approved and I believe we need to have that adopted for the following meeting.
So as a mover of the motion, could do that. This is a recommendation going forward. I think I would prefer as a mover of the recommendation to leave it as it is and then corporate administration could give some guidance to council, the council media as to whether this should be approving or adopting. I couldn't say that I actually know those specific definitions right now. It sounds like a very corporate officer kind of thing.
Mr. Palmer, do you want to weigh in on that or wait for the council meeting?
I think we can wait till the council meeting.
Sounds good. Any more discussion on this? All called question, all in favor? Passed. So what the third recommendation? Councillor Evans?
I'll move that we recommend that the following service levels be considered during the 2025 budget discussions as early pack. I do like the reading, but not that.
And a second for that? Councillor Stittner? Any other discussion about this matter? Councillor Palmer?
Yeah, so that, that's fine. If we have that discussion for the 2025 budget cycle, if there's a consideration of changes of service levels, that'll be 2026 that they would be implemented at the earliest. I would advocate for an earlier discussion, preferably in the winter when, when we're really feeling so on the service level question, so that we can give, council can have that dialogue. But I, I can speak to that more at the council, the council level, but I, I would definitely prefer that there be a discussion that we have in service levels this winter season and not waiting a year from now for budget because, you know, for those reasons.
Yeah, I agree that these should be considered in 2024. My understanding is that this is for the 2025 budget, but we'd be able to put in those changes to service levels going into the 2024 winter season. Any other comments? All called question, all in favor? And it's passed. We'll move on to nine B, MRDT, One Year Tactical Plan and Budgets.
Good afternoon. I guess I was just on the screen, so I, I.
Magic.
Yeah, it's magic. Thank you for coming today. As you know, this is a new kind of process to take a look at the MRDT One Year Tactical Plan and Budget. And through which, this is a meeting on November 28th meeting. In the past, this was done to meet my staff. It has got complicated program over the last year where we've increased to three percent, we've increased inflectionary, including the CSRD Area B. We've mapped out destination management planning and allocated an extra additional percentage to that activity. And we're trying to separate out for the purposes of constructing a set of contract, the operational expenditures for the visitor information center. So it's been more complicated. There's been more input required from stakeholders. And I believe it was the 14th yesterday that you had called for all input to be received by Rob board members. So what you're seeing today is the post to font draft and will be coming back on November 28th with the final draft approval and submitting it in to Ministry of Tourism on the 30th. With that, I'll turn it over to Megan, who you all know, and she can tell you the highlights.
Billy, I've been here so much. Thank you for having me again. Have you guys all read the annual tax plan? I was fine to go. Okay, well, I'm going to give you a high level, I'll give you a high level visual presentation. And then if you want any more information, you can dive deeper into the actual plan which you all received. Just kind of want to bring attention to our vision and mission. This is new as of the new five year strategy. The main changes being that we included the word community in both the vision and mission, which in previous versions of the strategy, it was all about bringing visitors here. There was nothing about kind of enhancing the community. There was nothing about tourism and the community being kind of one. So I would say that's kind of the main difference between our previous vision and now our current vision and mission. Growing sustainable tourism opportunities that benefit the community. A few key learnings from 2023, which I don't think will come as a ton of surprise to you, as you know. So we diversified our board. I would say this is one of the things that has really elevated our work and kind of the tourism sector as a whole. It's been so nice for our staff to have a really engaged board. In the past, only four people would show up to meetings. It was always the same accommodators. And now we have like a really diversified group of people that show up every month and are very engaged in everything we're doing. I think it just goes to show where we're heading and, and how people are really interested in how tourism is, is going and want to have a say and want to be involved in the process. As everyone knows, our expansion into the destination management realm is not coming without its challenges. We've spent the last year really navigating the process and looking forward to moving that forward in 2024. We truly believe that we can create value simultaneously for our industry, for our visitors and for our residents. And we've positioned ourselves to do that. We've positioned ourselves as a leader in the community and across the province. There are a lot of destinations coming to us for support, asking us what we're doing, how we're doing it. Yeah, and just, just looking to us for feedback on, on how to do things. The other thing that I thought was really interesting is around the OAP MRDT. So that's the MRDT that comes in from Airbnb, VRBO. So that's actually seeing the largest percentage growth with the expansion of the CSRD Area B and the three percent, which is great. Like it's awesome to see that growth. I think a big part of that is there's a lot of, there's a lot of vacation rentals in the CSRD Area B that are now contributing to that kind of OAP funding. Obviously the increases are a little bit skewed because we did move to three percent and, and like make the region bigger in May. So we're 37% up in general MRDT. That's not a direct comparison to apples to apples because we do have that three percent increase starting in May. But I did just want to kind of show the comparison in that, you know, our general MRDT grew by 37%, but the OAP MRDT actually grew by 126, which I think is really, is really interesting. So looking at kind of previous MRDT and forecasted MRDT in 2022, coming off the back of the pandemic is when we crested 1 million in MRDT. And for 2023, we're forecasting to bring in around 1.5 million. Really hard for us to forecast 2024, just especially with the three percent and the CSRD Area B. It's going to be one of those years where we don't really know what it's going to look like, but we've conservatively forecasted around 1.66 million. So this is for general MRDT. There are other types of revenue streams potentially, but for the general MRDT, which is what we're reporting on today, the breakdown of how we've been spending the funding, 42% of that goes into marketing. 26% is now going into destination management, 15% into visitor services, 14% into meetings, conventions, events and sport. And I would say the bulk of that is actually going into events. We don't, we haven't hosted a ton of like meetings and conferences, but we did kind of support, you know, the CMI conference that came to town and that kind of thing. But I'd say the bulk of that goes into hosted events in the destination. And then three percent on administration fees such as rent and office supplies and whatnot. The planning priorities from our five year strategy, they don't change for the annual. So everything in our annual tax plan follows up into the five year strategy. So the five planning priorities, a year round destination, a multi day stay, holistic destination stewardship, remarkable visitor experiences and organizational excellence. And I've kind of just split them up to make it a little bit easy into how each department kind of plays into one of the pillars. So our marketing department kind of works on the pillars around the year round destination and driving those multi day stays. Destination management is focused on that holistic destination stewardship pillar. The visitor services and visitor experience program, along with our events, go into our remarkable visitor experience pillar. And then kind of the administration and the most specific goes into organizational excellence. So yeah, I'm just going to give you a really high level overview of each of those pillars. Oh, sorry. So from a marketing perspective, our target markets are aligned with some of our core, our core stakeholders, one being Revelstoke Mountain Resort, another one being the Revelstoke Snowmobile Club in the winter. So you can see how some of our markets are a little bit different in the summer versus the winter. Primarily as a destination marketing organization, like that's a little bit smaller, our focus is on BC and Alberta. We don't have huge amounts of marketing dollars going internationally currently. Our secondary focus is a little bit further abroad in Canada, including Saskatchewan in the winter. And then we do invest in Australia as a winter market, as well as the USA is a massive winter market, especially for icon pass holders. Demographically, we haven't changed much in the last few years. We're focusing primarily on millennials. They're a key winter traveler, mature travelers. They really, they really fill our shoulder season gaps and our summer as well. And then active families are really our summer peak season travelers, as well as our holiday travelers. So out of the 42% of the general MRDT budget, that looks at like around just over 700,000. I've kind of split it up into percentages as to where it all goes. I'll dive a little bit deeper into each one of these categories, but that's like the breakdown in terms of the high level, how we spend our marketing dollars. So our website, I'm sure, I hope you're all familiar with it, c-revelstoke.com. We see a ton of visitation for our marketing information, but also for kind of our wildfire information. We're a top resource for a lot of people. Some of the goals for 2024 is to really improve our user experience on the website, keep people on the site longer, educate them more. We're looking at updating some of our blogs and campaign landing pages and really focusing on shoulder season because that's where we're really wanting to see increased growth rather than focusing on the peak seasons. Another one of our areas for the marketing budget is content. So that's basically photography and videography. One of our staff, Kyra manages this program. We're looking at creating a big data asset management system where we purchase photography and allow stakeholders to use all the content that we're purchasing. We like to use local content creators. So we hire local photographers, local videographers to, to do all of our content for us. Rarely, if ever, do we actually bring anyone into the destination. We have so many awesome creatives here, so we're really happy to support them. And then we create campaign toolkits for our stakeholders in all seasons as well. There's just a sample of that on the slide as a travel offer toolkit for stakeholders. We also do paid digital advertising through marketing. We like to really support our local community nonprofits and our local events. So we, for example, the Snowmobile Club is doing a poker run on December 2nd, so we'll put some paid advertising into promoting that for them on our channels. We also spend a lot of money on direct bookable experiences, so really trying to drive traffic to our stakeholders directly rather than them booking through third party like Expedia or Travel or TripAdvisor. We'll really try, that's part of kind of everything around trying to keep as much money in the community as we can. Another piece of the digital advertising is our display. So we purchase display ads for interest, brand awareness and targeting. And then search ads are more kind of specifically for people intending to travel. And again, we're looking at supporting more on the shoulder season, lower peak times. A new one for us this year is going to be brand activation. So this is something we're really excited about. In the past, we've had some pretty strict brand guidelines around how we can use the brand and how stakeholders can use the brand. So we're looking, really looking forward to releasing the brand in the masses, updating the style guidelines and delivering some partner workshops so people can understand how to use it. We want, one of the core pillars in the five year strategy is widespread brand adoption. So we want to really make some headway on that in 2024. We're looking at hiring some brand ambassadors who work with us directly, go around the destination and handing out swag. And we also look at, we'd like to develop a set of like iconography as well that can be associated with the brand. Right now, the brand's pretty stagnant of just being the Revelstoke period. And if organizations like the City of Revelstoke are interested in using it, like if we had some different types of iconography that would just separate them from tourism, but would all bring us together as kind of one cohesive visual, then we'd be happy to look into developing kind of that iconography. Travel media is another big area that we spend marketing dollars on. So that's hosting people in destination. We work with nonprofits and we support sustainability for all media visits. So every media visitor gets sustainability packed. It gives them the list of places that we want them to visit and they can visit and they can promote. So we make sure that the list doesn't include areas that are maybe sensitive to capacity or don't have garbages or just can't support any visitation. So we are ensuring that the media that we host are sending the correct message to their followers and making sure that they're promoting the destination in the way that we want it promoted. We've launched Sustain the Stoke a while ago, so we'll continue to really bolster that through travel media. We hope we like to host media who have a background in sustainability and they can link out to our sustainability initiatives as well through their visitor, their followers. And then another core initiative for our media is to ensure that they're promoting our travel offers, campaigns and shoulder season. So just making sure that all the messaging going out is cohesive, whether it's coming from us or somebody that we're hosting in destination. We're really proud of all the support that we offer stakeholders and we want to continue to do that in 2024. Specifically, we try to create campaigns that drive that length of stay and drive direct bookings and really have kind of a direct stakeholder investment. One of the examples on the screen here is with our golf club. So we support the stay and play package where you can save 25% off on green fees if you book two or more nights direct with an accommodator and you go to the golf course and redeem it. We actually, we subsidize the program so the golf course doesn't lose any of that 25%. And it's all, it's gains, they get 100% gains of every green fee. We also partner with nonprofits, so the Cycling Association, the Nordic Club, the Snowmobile Club and the Golf Club to offer digital marketing grants because we understand that visitors. to offer digital marketing grants because we understand that visitors who are coming here to Snowmobile are not going to come to the visitor center and be like, hey, where should I go sledding? They're going to the Rebelstoke Snowmobile Facebook page or they're going to the Rebelstoke Snowmobile Instagram. The Rebelstoke Snowmobile Club has somebody there answering our visitors and helping support their visitor experience. So we want to acknowledge that nonprofits are very much visitor-facing and rely on a lot of volunteers. Finally, we're looking forward to working closely with the Chamber on their tourism job board that they recently launched, launching? Recently launched, yeah. So we're going to do a big push in the spring because it's especially challenging for our tourism stakeholders to find summer employees. And we're also looking forward to the expansion of the ambassador program coming down the pipes in 2024. Okay, so our new realm is destination management. As you can see, 26% of our general MRDT is going into destination management and our initiatives, which is around just over 400,000 of the general MRDT budget. Breakdown is on the screen in terms of where that funding is going. How will the destination management plan be implemented? So Tourism Rebelstoke will manage the overall project. However, we are looking at creating a working group in 2024 to kind of spearhead all of the projects that each person has been identified as being a lead on. So we're not leading every project. We're just think of us as kind of like a project coordinator. Yeah, passing things over, making, making sure things are getting done and just overall ensuring that the project moves forward. Continuous progress updates are going to be on destinationrebelstoke.com. So this is our stakeholder-facing website. Consumers, c-rebelstoke.com, stakeholders, destinationrebelstoke.com. That's going to be where all of our kind of data is, any articles and the plan and updates to the plans that residents can go and see what we've been accomplishing, what's going on. It's also live, so we can update it and it's not a static document that we have to like stick to. So one of the elements of the destination management plan is research and evaluation. So we're looking at doing some robust research and evaluation in 2024. A good chunk of the budget is going to be going into kind of like baseline data. We did a 2019 value of tourism study and I think it'd be really valuable to look at 2023 as a comparison. 2019 was our best tourism year pre-pandemic. So it'll be interesting to see some comparisons as to where we are today. We're also looking at the tourism sector and how it contributes to carbon emissions in destination. So we're looking at kind of some baselines around what the tourism sector brings, both in economics, but also in kind of carbon emissions. And then we talked a little bit about tourism leakage, so that's all the tourism money that actually exits the destination. So if you book the Stoke Hotel on booking.com, 30% likely is going to booking.com, which is an agency based in Seattle or wherever they're based out of. So that percentage doesn't actually come into the community. It never comes into the community. So kind of looking at ways where we can basically make the leakage less than what it currently is at. The next category in the destination management plan is Thriving People. So Tanil, who is our new destination management sustainability manager, will be participating on a lot of committees next year, which I think is great. It's great that we're now kind of more involved in all the different great work that's going on in the destination. So one being the social development committee with Tahoe. It just allows us to see kind of how tourism is impacting that side of Rebelstoke. Some of the initiatives that have been identified in Underthreading People would be something like a dine-out for locals, which is kind of already happening. There's a lot of specials already going on in November. Village Idi does their half-price pizza, but maybe there's an opportunity to kind of like get all the restaurants together and like produce something a little bit more where people, locals are actually feeling the benefits of tourism because they can eat out cheaper at all those great restaurants. The Burger Challenge, we've also supported through Rebelstoke Bearware. They did a great job this year and hopefully that will just continue. Have some campaign ideas under Thriving People as well, the Local Love and the Give Stoke. So the Local Love is just kind of a campaign around allowing locals to access the benefits of tourism. So maybe we'd partner with, it's kind of like an expansion on Rebelstoke Mountain Resorts Local Days. So maybe we partner with them and one day all locals get to ride the pipe for free. Or there's a look, it's just kind of allowing locals who may not see the benefits of tourism be able to participate in some of the activities that tourism brings. The Give Stoke program, that's kind of still an idea in the works, but it would be around people contributing kind of extra over and above their stay to a campaign around giving Stoke. Maybe that's money that's going to the food bank or maybe it's going to a different initiative, but it just allows visitors to give more while they're visiting. And then you all know Thanksgiving back, we're looking at a program expansion for 2024 as well. Initiatives under pristine environment in 2024, many committees. So Tanil again is going to be facilitating the Sustainability Committee, assisting in the Climate Action Coalition, participating on the City of Rebelstoke Environmental Advisory Committee and the Chamber of Commerce Waste Committees. So she's going to have a lot of meetings in 2024. We're looking at continuing to support environmental-related events such as Refest. We did that last year and they're looking at expanding. And also looking at supporting more environmentally friendly transportation. So you've seen a large budget item in the annual tactical plan for the resort shuttle. And we hope to continue to be able to support that as much as we can with MRDT. We also had some ideas around Rebe branded e-bikes around the destination. I think there's a lot we can do in environmentally friendly options. And then finally, we're really lucky to have Tanil on board. She has a huge background in training. So she's really excited to help support some updates to the ambassador program potentially and offering businesses some climate and tourism 101 courses free of charge for businesses, residents and for visitors as well. Under Vibrant Culture, we'll be participating on the Arts and Culture Committee. We'll be continuing to support arts and culture events. And we really want to make some headway in connecting with First Nations and exploring integrating indigenous culture in some of our current tourism experiences as well. So hoping to work with Dale on those initiatives. Lastly, under Equitable Economy, we're looking at participating on the Economic Development Committee. And again, connecting with local indigenous groups to help maybe identify how they can create their own indigenous-based tourism experiences. We'd like to develop some year, a year-over-year funding model for visitor-facing nonprofits, similar to the digital marketing grant that we talked about before. We just recognize that nonprofits play a huge role in the visitor experience and often aren't recognized and don't have the funding to support that role. We'd like to look, we'd like to work with community partners to host an affordable housing conference to discuss the opportunities, which we talked, Steve Black had kind of come up with that idea. Visitor Services pillar, so I'm not going to speak much on this. Obviously, everyone knows there's been an RFP that's gone out. 15% of our budget has been allocated as determined by the RFP allocation. I did want to ask that we have put in a proposal to implement or to hopefully be the proponent that takes over visitor services, but if not, that's where we're at with 15%. And again, we have many new ideas. There will depend on whether or not our proposal is successful. We're almost there, guys. Meetings, conferences, events and sports, like I said, most of the budget out of here goes to local events and bringing events into Rebelstoke as well. Really small percentage of this goes to contracting and events coordinator. Most of it goes directly into events. Specifically, we like to bring, we like to support events in the shoulder season. We do support some peak season events based on how the media and the types of eyeballs that be on those events. So some of the key priorities for this category, like I said, we've seen really great success with contracting our events role. She's helped manage kind of some of our internal events like the Wildflower Festival, but also just managing the event calendar, making sure that's completely up to date. We want to maintain ongoing collaboration with our partners to ensure a consistent approach to marketing and communications. And we really want to make sure that we're supporting events in alignment with the five-year strategy, benefiting both visitors and residents. I think events is such a great space that sees the integration of visitors and residents and Luna and Ready Live and all those events are great. They're a testament to bringing residents and visitors together. We do have performance measures, so they're linked on this slide. They're going to be on destinationrebelstoke.com. But if you're ever wondering how we're doing, it's all listed in our kind of KPI spreadsheet. So all of these KPIs are in the annual tactical plan. Feel free to go through them. This is obviously from the last five-year strategy. The next five-year strategy is a little bit different based on the new strategy. And obviously, we don't have any data populated yet. We're still in 2023. But you can always refer back to this, these performance metrics to see how we're doing, how we're obtaining data and offer feedback on maybe other data we should be collecting. I think that's it. Wait, we're good. Shameless plug for our stakeholder event tonight at 11 Rebelstoke Lodge. We've had over 60 tourism stakeholders sign up, which is like the most we've ever had. And I was telling Caroline, I'm not sure if it's like because people are more engaged with us or because they just want two free drinks and food at the Quartermaster, which is also fair. And thank you to Erin and Tim for RSVP-ing, but if anybody wants to come and you haven't RSVP'd, there's, we will make space for you. It's going to be a little bit different than what I, like quite different than what I presented today. It's going to go into a little bit more of the meat and each of our staff members are going to be presenting on their own area of expertise. So it'll be more interesting than me presenting on everybody's area of expertise. That's it for the annual tactical plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question on the table?
Not such a question. I just wanted to say thank you. I do always enjoy your presentations. They are informative and they have easy-to-follow graphics, which I appreciate because I'm not a spreadsheet or a math guy. Thank you for the work you put into them, as for always.
Thanks. Thanks for being on our board.
They assigned me to it. You're welcome.
Counselor Allen?
I, uh, thank you. And through the chair, Megan, again, thank you for the presentation. Great, very informative, comprehensive and well-done as usual. I wanted to follow up on one specific comment that just arose during your presentation. I wasn't thinking about it before, but you were talking about branding and possibilities for partnership and that. You know, I'll comment directly that the city, something of sort of an idea floated a couple of times is that I think if you look at it holistically, there may be confusion about what our branding is as a corporate entity as the City of Rebelstoke and to some extent being overpowered by the Rebelstoke full-stop brand, including understandably with the, the sign out front of the town as you're driving in from the highway, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, and that could have a knock-on effect for us, not, not for tourism rebels, but for us as a corporation because if there's this powerful brand with lots of great marketing behind it, people may misinterpret those messages as being our messages. So that could be abstract concern. It could be right, it could be wrong. I don't know. Food for thought, but I guess my question for Megan is when you talk about opportunities for co-branding, when you talk about implementing logos, et cetera, because essentially you have a word mark now, only not, you know, you know, full-on brands or other industry. What are you thinking and just gathering your thoughts and also opening it up for thoughts for other members of council or city staff to comment on, on that sort of thing?
Yeah, thanks. Good comments. I guess I'll address your first question around what we're thinking. Really, it's just an opportunity for stakeholders to use the brand in a way that they haven't been able to in the past. So in the past, we had brand guidelines where, say, a company like Tantrum wanted to put the Rebelstoke logo on their shirt. They were allowed to do that, but their logo had to be 75% and the Rebelstoke logo had to be 25%. Some of that had to do with our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce being the sole retailer of the Rebelstoke brand. But we feel what's happened, because we've been so stringent on the brand guidelines, is you're seeing a lot of knockoffs coming. I'm sure you guys have seen kind of like uglier, maybe to my eyes, I guess, like a little bit like different versions and it just go, it adds to the confusion of like what is the brand. And so we feel as though if we are opening up the brand to the whole destination, it allows, hopefully, the people who are creating knockoffs of the brand that we create will feel empowered to just use our brand as, as their own and, and sell it if they want to. Like Free Spirit Sports wants to sell Rebelstoke shirts, they can sell Rebelstoke shirts. Like in our eyes, we'd rather see the brand used correctly and allow anybody to use it than have kind of stakeholders using knockoffs because they're not, they're not allowed to use the brand.
Okay.
And I, and I agree with your comments around the city. I think it's a really important discussion. Like I know Kimberly uses, they all have the same kind of cohesive branding. It might be worth chatting with them about that process. And I think, yeah, I think there's positives and negatives, obviously, to both sides. And again, we're not like, everybody needs to use the brand. It's more of a like, if you want to use it, it's now available to you.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate that. And through the chair, I noticed Director Brown.
Just a comment to add to that. We have a new communication staff person that's been on this week with the city. So we're really looking forward to working and having to work with you and syncing some of the communications processes that we share. Rebelstoke, Tourism Rebelstoke as a contractor for the city, part of the contractual obligations are that the materials produced by Tourism Rebelstoke are actually owned by the city. So, you know, it would be pretty straightforward to, to share or to develop some co-branded stuff, but that would be under the purview of the new marketing person. So looking forward to having those conversations.
Counselor Tom?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Always great to have your enthusiasm and I think it really oozes out into the quality of the product that you deliver. So thank you for that. The, on the branding, that's an interesting dialogue that I think kind of remains silent on. I, I, I noticed that there's actually three kind of branding things. There's a City of Rebelstoke official. There's what Tourism Rebelstoke is doing. And then there's the resort, which has their branding, which I think in the eyes of international travelers, it's, it is kind of Rebelstoke as well. And how those things can align or augment each other would be great. Just by the way. The, uh, on the discussion that, you know, maybe council might have in the future on our, our branding, it, it, I'm at high risk of offending historical buffs. The, the branding, I think that the city has served its purpose in the past and is maybe not reflective of how we've evolved as a community and to see more alignment. And there's, there's been a little bit, that's already happening kind of organically through the signs and stuff, which is part of the new, new branding and how that unrolls in the future will be interesting. I'm definitely supportive of getting that kind of alignment as much as possible. Just to comment on the meetings, meetings, conferences, events and sports.
Yeah.
So the council's had dialogue, quite a bit of dialogue on the new multiplex. I'm going to be more and more verbally, my preference would be to call it a mountainplex. It's reflective of our community and not, definitely not just an arena. But when we look at meetings, conferences, events and sports, you know, the ability for having conferences and as this dialogue, how, how the community embraces or not in the future when we look at a multiplex and the opportunity of conferences. Could you make a, just a general comment on the lens of Tourism Rebelstoke and, and maybe plant some seeds of ideas for council on how we could leverage and partner to, you know, potentially make a new multiplex facility that is, really benefits the local community, but doesn't burden the community with high debt. So how can we channel some of these? And so that's what I sort of just picked up on that little line item and I think that might be a dialogue in the coming years.
Yeah, I mean, like as it currently stands, the MRDT can't be used for infrastructure specifically. It's not to say that that is not a possibility in the future. If at like, I, I'm sure you guys have seen other municipalities use MRDT for specific projects. If it's been kind of like a project that's been brought forward by both the tourism sector and the city. So there could be an opportunity in the future. I mean, that would be about five years down the road with the next five-year strategy. But I think where we can really support on that project in the interim is understanding mainly kind of like what is missing from like a visitor perspective in terms of like recreation multiplex type activities. Like now that we've lost, well, essentially right now, we don't have the bowling alley. We don't have peak axe throwing right now. So we're missing a lot of indoor opportunities for our visitors. So potentially there's an opportunity there where we can understand like what would work for visitors and for residents. I think that's where we can maybe offer a lens currently.
Good, thank you. And then I guess just a final sort of comment, again, kudos on being able to get to this 3% in the larger areas that we're getting this.
That was the easy part.
That was the easy part. Well, and it, 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 easy and yet I think it was a huge success getting, getting a unanimous buy-in from the, from the business community, I think was amazing. from the business community, I think was amazing. Um, I was in, uh, Kelowna this week and I paid, uh, three percent, um, uh, their three percent tax is a different thing, but it's the same thing in many ways. So it was interesting. I thought, okay, I wonder what Kelowna does with their three percent. And then I stopped at, um, the Kelowna airport and saw the Revelstoke, you know, you know, welcome to Kelowna, but really you need to go to Revelstoke. You have to write boldly on the doors. And I thought, well, that's really cool and a good use of, uh, our funds. Uh, thank you very much.
Just a quick question in regards to the, um, the funding. I was wondering if, uh, like the proposed partners that are in your tactical plan, um, would they be getting the, the funding directly or how would that be distributed?
It kind of depends on the situation, I guess. Um, some proposed part, like potential partners could be funding support, but they could also be, so for example, I'm just trying to think of one specifically off the top of my head.
So I, for an example, like the Indigenous Friendship Society.
Right. Yeah, totally. Yeah, for sure. So yeah, they'll approach us on, um, initiatives that they're doing. And we have definitely given them funding directly to get those initiatives off the ground. Um, so yeah, for sure, there's funding available. It's not like specifically tagged to them for a certain amount, but that's kind of where the, that, that's like the line item that the funding would come out of.
Okay.
But yeah, specific support is going to nonprofits. We spent a hundred, over a hundred, almost two hundred thousand non nonprofits in twenty twenty-three.
Counselor Kerry.
Your worship, uh, through the chair to Megan. Uh, you mentioned funding for the Resort Shuttle.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, can you explain some of the recent changes?
Yeah, I mean, Ingrid's probably better to talk about it because she was kind of a proponent in that, if you're fine with that.
Basically, in the past, we were not allocating these warranty funds to support these shuttle services. We're maybe lobbying and advocating hard with the destinations we serve on our sphere to find a way to do that. And the original thing that is to cover a little portion of the driver costs that relate to the visitor ridership, if that makes sense. So as a result, we're able to, you know, work with the Revelstokes, separate out those costs relating to the drivers, separate out that portion making to visitor ridership and cover about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in this year of shuttle costs and aiming at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in next year's shuttle costs. So that will significantly reduce the impact on taxation and other funding partners. And then as we look at merging the two systems, it will still be, um, able to be used to augment, uh, that ridership function.
That's fantastic.
Fantastic.
Uh, any other comments around the table? Uh, Seena, I want to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll move on to nine C, twenty twenty-two Safe Restart Grant Follow-up.
Hey, everyone. Uh, no, no presentation with this report, just, uh, with this discussion paper. Uh, really want to share some of those results and, uh, have a conversation and, and request guidance for some of the future municipal support of social initiatives that we can, uh, that can be, yeah, that we can take from the results of this, uh, of this initiative. Um, so just for some background and, uh, following, you know, following the closures and the, and the pandemic closures that we had faced in twenty twenty, we, uh, ran a COVID survey and really tried to gauge the community's social health out of that. Um, and the, the gravity doesn't elude anyone now, but at the time, we learned that twenty-eight percent of heads of households reported that housing was unaffordable, insecure, didn't meet needs. Twenty-eight point five percent of respondents, uh, were temporarily unemployed with an, with an additional twenty percent, having lost some work, some work. Um, twenty point four percent of respondents were in financial crisis or had, or had mountain bills. And respondents ranked mental health and wellbeing is, is one of their highest community, uh, social priorities. So, uh, this, the response, uh, through this grant program, through the COVID Restart Grant Program, which was provided to cities, uh, from the province, was, was rapid and the intention was to cover those costs that were incurred during COVID for reduced services in some areas, uh, reduced revenues in others. And really, uh, they included a provision really to, uh, support social services, which, um, many larger communities actually provide through their city, um, and, and incorporate that in their city services. And in smaller communities, uh, these grant programs were, uh, a common practice for many smaller communities. Um, however, Revelstoke, uh, did allocate a, a significant chunk of the COVID restart for grant funds, uh, relative to other communities. So that was a positive of, of our response. Um, so the outcomes are listed in more detail on the, uh, some of the outcomes that we started listed in more detail in the discussion paper. However, uh, highlights of, of, uh, supporting the hospice society, uh, which is a volunteer organization that has high training, uh, needs and were, was able to resume services due to this, uh, grant funding. The women's shelter society, uh, supporting increased need. The Indigenous Friendship Society, uh, covering lost grants, grand revenue from seniors programming that couldn't run, uh, and from, and, and then the food bank, uh, purchasing food to meet record demand, which hasn't ceased. Uh, I think this one is important to just pause on because it's critical to our community's health as, uh, one of the only real time indicators of the, yeah, of, of the most vulnerable and the, and the lower socioeconomic status and how, um, they're being impacted currently economically. And really the, the focus of that is that, given all of those statistics that I read off at the beginning, uh, up to twenty or thirty, upwards of twenty or thirty percent that are impacted with job loss, um, today, or I guess yesterday, the food bank attendance was as high as those first few weeks of COVID. So as high or higher in these first few weeks of COVID. Um, and so the importance of recognizing that the long lasting effects of the pandemic are with us, even if we're not, um, you know, talking about the case load or, or those sorts of, um, statistics on the daily. Um, the one, the last result I'll, I'll end off with is the Community Housing Society, um, supporting the costs, uh, increases from their suppliers and operating costs meant that they could, uh, keep residents housed to, um, and, and work with them when they, when they lost employment as well as, uh, that was, that is the seed of their strategic plan to hire staff and position, uh, position them to take on property management, uh, preparing them for, uh, the RFP submission to Downing Street and hopefully the, um, bringing another hundred sixty-five units to the community. So that, that investment, uh, I, alone, if, if that paid off would be a really great result from this, uh, from this grant. Um, a few points just for, for, uh, you know, subsequent discussion at the Social Development Committee and, and some of the highlights of that have been that we're seeing people employed now as, employment has rebounded, but we also have seen such, uh, sharp cost of living increases that low income residents are still challenged to meet the, the cost of living and, uh, even those who might have previously been self-sufficient are, are not meeting their needs as, as, uh, effectively. And that the economic challenges compounded by this, uh, that are, are really important to emphasize. The living wage, uh, was calculated at twenty-four sixty for twenty twenty-three. Um, and that's, yeah, that's a full, it, it's about eight to nine dollars about the, the minimum wage. So that gives you a picture of, of, uh, you know, the gap. Those, uh, the increased rates, uh, and then increased interest rates for, uh, homeowners and debt holders is just, uh, another, um, important one that says.
Carry on.
So some of the conversations staff have been having with external organizations and stakeholders have focused around, uh, under unfunded social impacts on residents and the social services that are grant funded that, um, either have had impacts grow due to other external factors. So I think, uh, when there's a wildfire and communities come to, uh, and, and residents of other communities come to Revelstoke, if they lean on social services, they're leaning on, uh, our local safety net and not necessarily a provincial one. Another one would be, uh, changes at the regional level to funding programs. So, uh, a notable change to that is the Columbia Basin Trust, uh, just change, their changes to the social, uh, grant program, which was, uh, really, yeah, that was depended on for, for a lot of programs that were, uh, supporting people in the community and, uh, their strategic plan update is still in progress. But, but for the time being, the social grants are not on their, on their list of, uh, available grants. So all those trends really mean that, uh, the current model for delivering community support is, is becoming unsustainable. Uh, and, and we hear that from a lot of different organizations. And while we are dealing with, uh, issues that originate far above the level of control the municipality has, uh, we still, you know, are, are asking ourselves or can ask ourselves, uh, through the poverty reduction, we also asked, how can our community deal with these, these symptoms and support those who are working with vulnerable residents day to day as well as, uh, be, because that is the city, how the city interacts with, um, with those organizations. So, um, the guidance that we're looking for is around this key recommendation, uh, of the poverty reduction strategy, which was to review those practices, the municipal practices that directly affect, uh, services or costs occurred to low income families, residents and organizations that support affordability. And that's, that's a metaphor, that's a run on sentence probably too. But, um, just to get the conversation started, I, I wanted to give a little bit of flavor of what the, this could look like or what thoughts were out there. Uh, what thoughts we've been having around that. So, uh, this is a probably old fable or, I don't know. Well, an old, an old saying or a story that people have heard, but, uh, if you haven't, the U S standard railroad gauge, which is the distance between rails is four feet and eight point five inches. And it's a strange number and probably, uh, most people nowadays do not know why that was used. But it's, you can trace the history back, uh, through a number of decisions that were made. And because they were built that way in, in the United Kingdom and England and English ex- patriots just designed the U S railroads, they used that standard. And before that, those rail lines were used for trainways and that's the gauge that was used, the distance that was used for those trainways. And they used them because the people who use the trainways had this, only a few sets of jigs and tools to, to make that distance and they built those with the same wheel spacing that now is used. Um, so the point of that being that some of the practices that we come to accept over time are just, uh, they're, they're because they were done that way. And, uh, what, what's envisioned is just identifying some, uh, some of those practices and making, uh, and starting with those that haven't been updated since their creation. Uh, so if they, if they are social in nature and haven't been updated, that would be kind of a low hanging fruit. Uh, there would be, uh, stakeholder interviews with those relevant to the documents and, uh, especially important collaborate, co- collaboration with management and staff to determine if changes are feasible, either practically or financially feasible. And following that, support from corporate administration, uh, some early conversations have been had, but support to modify policies and procedures as needed or as recommended by those management. And then proposal of changes to, um, to, uh, City of Revelstoke Management and then Community. And finally bringing back those changes to council and approving, uh, those changes over that council, uh, stood by. And, and so this is all for discussion. This isn't a formal, a, a formal request, but, um, you know, just getting guidance on whether that sort of process would be, uh, would be favored and, and could, it could be seen to meet some of those needs that we're noticing in the community. Uh, and important to note that no budgetary changes are being recommended, um, but they could be recommended for next budget cycle if supported.
Any comments or questions from council?
Counselor Lewis, Joe?
Uh, thank you commercials. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, yeah, as you've kind of outlined, um, these restart grants were definitely lifeline for a lot of these nonprofits, um, going through the tough COVID times. Um, they're still not out of it yet. Um, and with CBT's grant parameters changing, some organizations are not able to secure core funding and they really have huge questions leading forward. And that affects, um, service deliveries to the community as well as people's livelihoods and their jobs in this community. Um, I understand that this isn't necessarily under the purview of the municipality, but we do really have to look at supporting the social programs here in town because this is the baseline community that has built Revelstoke into this destination and they have to be considered as residents that deserve to be here and do need that assistance moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments, Counselor Leno?
Uh, yeah, your worship. Um, I, I correspond and thank you, um, Mr. Attia for the presentation. Uh, we corresponded really briefly, just one quick, uh, through the chair, a quick follow-up question for confirmation, uh, is that that's it for the Safe Restart Grant. This, this, this funding is maxed out. So this is the end. Um, and so, uh, flowing on to that, uh, you know, hearing of reductions of staffing at the food bank here, for example, due to, um, changes in funding, exhaustion of, uh, uh, you know, COVID related, uh, supplements, uh, and, uh, CBT funding changes, et cetera, and coupled with, uh, as we heard today, increasing demand and demand across, uh, the board. You know, how do we, uh, say this or transition to this into, uh, an ongoing discussion that aligns with our existing policies and procedures, some of which are referenced in the report, uh, to make sure that, um, we are, uh, um, addressing these issues. One of the challenges can be is, is it's hard to like point to one number, one factor or, uh, you know, one statistic. And we often get them, you know, anecdotally, uh, it's like, oh, you know, living wage is up, you know? Uh, what response is appropriate for that or food bank usage is up? What, what response is, uh, is there needed for that? Uh, you know, uh, housing costs and rental numbers, we sometimes have access to those, but I feel that, uh, as a community, we need to, uh, ensure we're being responsive. I'm not saying we're not doing anything. We're doing lots. We have lots of policies and procedures, uh, in place. But I'm looking for, uh, you know, a combination of, here's the end of a, a funding, uh, stream. Uh, we are hearing of a real increased demand. Uh, where, where, what, the question is this, what level of response can we muster or should we muster or what direction should we take forward so that this is not just an informational report that, uh, we all move on from and, uh, don't take any action on? And that's, that's my question, uh, through the chair of staff or of council or anyone who wants to provide an input. It's, I'm hoping it's a, it's a very general question.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead. Any comments?
Uh, through the chair, I'd, I'd ask that, um, yeah, that if, uh, that ongoing nature, uh, could be identified through a, through a project, that ongoing recommendation. So, um, things like implementing review timelines for, for those practices, uh, once they are updated and once that is supported by, by, uh, staff management, um, ensuring that they come around for review on a timely basis and then adjusting to the need of, of the day. And, and factoring in, you know, if, if it is a multi-year, you know, multiple years have passed, then some data, uh, would have been collected through something like OCP, uh, update, that's kind of forthcoming, uh, captures some social, some social indicators within.
Any other comments from council? Who's brown?
I would add that target dashboard, you know, still without a new website to be developed. We are looking for more opportunities to stream that data in real time. All the different social indicators we can get access to, whether it's food bank numbers, whether it's information coming through different service agencies, through our community collaboration network partners. So, you know, we're in a pretty good place now for gathering the data. We've got some great models of funding supports that have worked. We've got a really strong social development committee that has the mandate on this council to explore these opportunities. And I think having them identify one of the key issues we need to target and identify, you know, and access funding to support more in-depth look at what the needs are and what the appropriate response is. So we have the tools. I think we're just, you know, wanting to ensure that the council understands that we intend to use them.
Thank you for that comment. And I think, you know, as Council Lucy has alluded to, keeping on top of the social fabric, the social issues in the community, even if, you know, as Council Orlando has indicated, the restart funds are now gone. But we're going to need to pay attention to what's going on in the community because the needs are increasing. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Attia? Council Lucy?
Thank you, Mayor Solz. Yeah, I just want to touch on the food bank numbers. So we had seen in early summer, we had actually exceeded the peak of COVID for our food bank clients and individuals served. And we have had to change our distribution hours and days and drop down from three days to two days. And in that, we saw a 35% increase on the individuals served this week over last week. We're going to continue to see this number grow and we're losing funding to pay for people to actually administer these programs here in town. And it's relying more and more on volunteers, even when it comes to hamburgers and people with mobility issues. And it's gonna, we're already seeing volunteer burnout and it's going to be a continual issue as we, as people are needing to work more to be able to afford to stay here in town. They're having less time to volunteer. So it's really just a perfect storm. And we're gritting our teeth and getting through it, but there is definitely uncertainty throughout our organization as well as others about what the future really holds.
Excellent. Anyone else? Councilor?
Your worship, yeah, I just wanted to make an anecdotal comment and it's just a personal comment. But you know, where I grew up, when I was young, we had, you know, it was a working class neighborhood and we had a large spread of incomes and situations for different families. And at the time, you know, if you were struggling, it was much more common for you to wear that on your sleeve. And, you know, you would let people know and you would, you know, it would be apparent to everyone. One of the things I've noticed lately is that, you know, as times change and generations change and people attitudes change and a lot of other things change, I feel like a lot of people don't do that anymore. So they might be really down and out and on their last rope, but they're keeping up appearances, you know? They're, you know, doing everything they can to project to outside, to people on the outside that they've got it together and they're managing. But when you, you know, start to have those conversations with people, including people who are, you know, employed full time or, you know, own a house or, you know, or at least have an obligation to a lender to pay or whatnot, that in fact, they will share anecdotal stories of you with you of just how hard they're struggling, just how close they are to the edge, just how much they are going without, just how many of the opportunities this community provides they cannot approach or partake in or how services that they require, be it social services, medical services, family services, are not being met. Now, I want to make sure we do a lot and make sure that I emphasize that we do a lot, we try a lot, we care a lot here in this community, but we can never forget this. And I know that as my circumstances have changed over my lifetime, you know, I can report at least again anecdotally from my experiences that, you know, it becomes easier to forget that people, you know, who are working next to you, sitting next to you, living and playing next to you may have a lot harder of a circumstances because you're not experienced in that as you did in the past. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us as leaders in the community to be aware and continually search for, remind ourselves and ask how we can have an effective response when we are faced with these issues and make sure that we are leading with empathy on these issues and being fully aware of the challenges that people are taking and the sacrifices that people are making to, you know, for example, struggle yet also find time to volunteer their time for the community or give back or find ways that they can contribute to the community. So I do appreciate the presentation and I would really like to continue to hear from staff on ideas, responses, ways to move forward. And if any resolution or recommendation for a future resolution from council is required at this time, I would happy to entertain that if there's any thoughts. If it's not, just that I feel much more comfortable having said my piece in this situation.
Appreciate that comment. There is a resolution you're looking for, is there, Mr. Attia?
No, no, that resolution, I think the conversation and, yeah, hearing the support for this in principle just means that we can begin to work on that and prepare to bring something to management and to council.
Appreciate you taking your time. All right, we're going to move on to item 9D, preparation and asset naming policy. Ms. Floyd, you're up.
All right. So your worship, I thought that this report was a little more time restricted in that the Director of Parks, Rock and Culture received a request from the Revelstoke Disc Club Society to name their facility. She suggested an alternate option. They have done their signage. So I'm happy if with the public here, if you would like to defer this conversation to a committee of the whole in January or we can continue it now.
Councilor Palmer?
Yeah, I would suggest this be deferred to January.
Okay. Council Lucy?
Yeah, I agree. So I'll put that as a motion.
Okay, Councilor Palmer making a motion. Council Lucy I'll second it. Any further discussion on that motion? See none. All is in favor. Motion's carried. This item is deferred till January. Okay, moving on to item 10, Bill 35, discussion that says linked and I can't open anything. So I'm going to ask you if you have something there.
I can open it if you click on the agenda and go through your main section. But I can't open it from the sidebar.
Is there a presentation?
Mr. Simon's here.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Mr. Simon. I'm looking around the room going, where are you?
Sorry, your worship. I've been a little under the weather the past couple of days, so best to stay away from the group. And you guys are trying to trick me. You weren't in that seat at the beginning. I'm not feeling the best, but I can swear you weren't there at the beginning. So, yeah, no, no. No formal presentation from staff today. This was an item that was put on the Committee of the Whole agenda by council. But that said, if council wishes, I can give a really brief overview of the new legislation that was passed and received royal assent on October 26th, some of the ways that it may or may not impact the city. And from staff's perspective, what we would be looking for in terms of a resolution from Committee of the Whole to make a recommendation to council today. So if you wish, I can do a little bit of an overview.
That'd be great. Appreciate it.
So the province has obviously been aware of some of the challenges with respect to short term rentals and their impact on the long term rental housing supply within different cities across British Columbia. So they introduced legislation that was, looked to be expedited through the process, getting royal assent on October 26th, specifically targeting short term rentals within the province. So a real high level summary and staff have definitely done a thorough review of the legislation itself. There's a lot of nuance and granular details to it and staff still have a lot of questions specifically how it would relate to our existing short term rental framework and any changes that council and the community would like to see to our short term rental framework. But a general overview of some of the key pieces contained in the legislation is as follows. So one of them being the ability to increase fines under a municipal ticket information bylaw, so separate from the bylaw that council was discussing earlier today, being the adjudication bylaw. So under an MTI bylaw, the maximum fine per offense per day, and this would go for everything, not just short term rentals, is going from $1,000 to $3,000 per offense per day. The province through this legislation will also be creating a provincial registration requirement for short term rentals. So if you're operating an STR in the province, you need to sign up through this registration system that they will be looking at implementing in 2024, most likely towards the end of 2024, based on our understanding. And they will also be establishing a provincial enforcement branch to support with the implementation of the legislation. Now, the only information that staff have on this, because they are still working through the finer details of it, is that they're envisioning it as something similar to the residential tenancy branch. But again, we're going to have to wait and see the specific details. There's a requirement for any host platforms, doesn't matter what host you are. It could be something very, very minor. It doesn't have to be Airbnb or VRBO. But if you are advertising a listing without a valid business license and the municipality makes a request, you have to remove said advertisement. So that's something that municipalities have been advocating for for quite some time now. And it aligns nicely with our business licensing bylaw requirements where it is a offense to be advertising without a valid business license. One of the other key changes that's included in the legislation is changes to the lawful non-conforming protection, specifically for short term rentals. So lawful non-conforming relates to grandfathered is the non-technical term for it. So essentially, if someone was operating a short term rental before the city had any regulations with respect to short term rentals and they were deemed to be compliant at the time, and then the city implements new bylaws that would bring them out of their compliance status, this legislation would no longer allow them to have protections to be grandfathered into the current framework. So they would need to abide by any changes that the city then makes. Now, all of these four requirements I just described or these changes, they're applicable to the city regardless of how we choose to go forward with this last one. The last one is quite critical and this will be a very big decision point for council and the community. And it's the ability to opt in to what the province has dubbed a permanent residency requirement. So right now, as a resort municipality, we are exempt from this. So it will be a decision that would be required via resolution from council. Staff are not recommending that today by any means. But council will have to make a decision whether or not we choose to opt in to this requirement. What this requirement would do is it would require anyone who is operating a short term rental within the city to only be able to operate it out of their principal residence. So that is defined in the legislation as the place that you spend the majority of your time. So for instance, if you own two properties, you live at one for seven months out of the year and the other one for five months. The one that you're living at for seven months out of the year could then be rented as a short term rental without you there for the remainder of the five months of the calendar year. So that is a decision that is certainly going to have to be made. Now, staff have been reviewing this. There's been some, obviously preliminary discussions with different stakeholders in the community that have reached out to staff to ask about the status and where the city is going to be heading with this. As of right now, it is staff's recommendation that we really need to delve into this a little bit more and get some more details and understand objectively what the implications are for opting in versus not opting in so that council and the community can have a robust discussion. So what staff would recommend Committee of the Whole today is that Committee of the Whole makes a recommendation to council that would go on December 12th agenda, that staff prepare a report for early 2024, ideally in January, that would outline a process by which staff would complete public engagement as well as an analysis, any budget impacts for understanding the impact of opting in. I mean, do want to note, even just a preliminary review and first glance, short term rentals in this community, you know, there's a variety of perspectives and there's some people that are definitely at opposing ends of the spectrum. This is going to be a nuanced process to go through and it's very important from staff's perspective that we take the time to get this right and really understand what the implications are from opting in so that we're not making decisions that are short sighted with multiple unintended consequences. Now, with that said, again, what we'd be looking for is a recommendation from Committee of the Whole that staff prepare a report in early 2024, January 2024, that would come back and have a more thorough conversation about this as well as a public engagement strategy, which will be quite key. And staff are here to answer any questions to the best of our ability. We have had some conversations with the province. We followed up with them with some additional questions. Specifically, one of the key ones is whether or not there is a time limit with respect to opting in. And if the city doesn't opt in now, can we opt in at a later date? There's definitely some concerns with taking that approach, but I will pass it over to council now. If you guys have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them.
All right. Appreciate that. And so just one question before I go to council. We do not have all of the details as to this legislation yet, do we, on Bill 35?
Through, to your worship, we have the bill in its full, in its entirety, is passed now. So the entire bill is available to be reviewed. Now, the nuanced questions with any new legislation and how it specifically relates to a regulatory framework that the city wants to implement, that's where there needs to be certainly more discussion. And how it meshes with our existing short term rental regulations, that's where there needs to be more discussion. Whenever new legislation is passed and, you know, it's no secret, the province over the last three weeks has announced sweeping changes across the spectrum of planning legislation. And these are, and I don't say this lightly, they're unprecedented and they're probably the most substantial legislative changes in BC's history with respect to planning or with respect to housing at least. So there's a lot of nuanced details that we need to understand. And we need to make sure that anything that is being proposed is not only vetted by the community and has the support of the community, but is also aligned with the legislation. So staff will be working closely on any changes that may be directed as a result of this to ensure that we're aligning with that intent. Because whenever there's new legislation, what that means is a new legal precedent will then be set over the next decade.
Appreciate that. Council Chair?
I'm quite honored to wear this. I'm wondering, I don't know if this is a point of privilege, if we could take a quick recess, I could talk to the board opposite prior to discussion.
Yeah, or we could carry on and you could have that conversation and we ask more questions. Do you be offended by that?
Offended? No, not offended.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and have your conversation and we'll go. So any other questions for Mr. Simon at this point regarding Bill 35 and short term rentals? Council Lucy, you have some questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Solz. When we talk about grandfather units, when it comes to different spot zoning that we've given to different STR operators, how would that be affected through this legislation?
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship, Council Lucy, that's completely dependent on how council wishes to amend the bylaw. So some examples, if council wanted to peel those rights back and return these back into the long term residential occupancy market, council could do that and we could rescind the business licenses that were previously issued, change the zoning. And regardless of them operating lawfully under the previous approval that was granted, they would now be required to conform to the new zoning bylaw. So essentially, if council directed a zoning amendment be done to remove all the spot zone properties, that is something that would be lawful under the legislation.
Does that answer your question or is there a follow up?
Yes, there's one follow up. When we talk about different locations like McKenzie Village, if there are individuals here in town who have bought properties up there that they are running as short term rentals, but aren't necessarily their primary residence, if we opt into this, then that would make it that they are not able to operate those as short term rentals?
Through your worship, that is correct. They would only be allowed to operate them as a short term rental if it was their principal residence, which is defined as the place that they spend the majority of their time under the legislation.
Thank you.
So there's going to be a lot to discuss as we move forward. Council Palmer, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor Solz, and thank you to a planner suggesting a measured approach. You know, there's a whole host of things, but I think that we have a lot to sort of think about before a whole lot of public comments. But just on those last couple of questions, I think it's extremely concerning that a government can backtrack on a longstanding ability for people and then take those rights away. It feels very authoritarian. And so that would be my first immediate concern. And but the measured approach of where this goes, I'm concerned that some people are just wanting to jump on the regulate short term rental accommodation on perceptions around Airbnbs in a reactive way without understanding the big implications. And the, just I guess a further comment with the censoring of social media on the ability of news articles, that there is an absence of information that's going out to the public and the concerns of what's happening with the government. That's going out to the public and the concerns of what's happening with the government. Uh, taking an authoritative approach and uh taking rights away from people. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Uh, Counselor Stateeners.
Thank you, Mayor Sols, I appreciate it. Um, I just uh thank, first of all. Uh, excuse me, I'll start off by thanking Mr. Simon for his brief overview. I think there's a lot of uh details that we really have to delve into, and I think this is a great overview of. Uh, of the conversations to be had, and there's a lot of engagement that we need to be going out to the public and getting. Um, you know, a lot from our our stakeholders, uh, you know, mainly um the raw, the uh, the Chamber of Commerce. Um, the individuals that have that have, uh, you know, made investments into Mackenzie Village. Uh, one of my fears is that, uh, you know, if we blindly kind of dived into this and and just arbitrarily adopted this policy. We don't have anything that's supporting us. That enforces just vacant homes. You know, if you look at, if you look at the price of real estate currently being offered by Catat Golf Course. You know, currently on the market at three point two million Canadian. It would be a steal good deal for a foreign investor to just purchase a a a house in Revelstoke. At, you know, a quarter of the cost at five hundred thousand Canadian and then just that's it vacant. So I think that this is a misnomer that, you know, by creating this air, you know, by by creating a short term. Uh, rental policy that limits short term rentals, that that's going to create more housing, I think that's a little bit of a misnomer, and I think you're going to go down that direction. We also need to be looking at other policies to help carry that along with it. So.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that comment. And so, Mr. Simon, you and I did an interview with the newspaper a while ago regarding this sort of stuff and. I had a phone call uh yesterday from provincial politicians saying, hey, we've already opted in and done the deal. And they said, no, we we are looking at the, you know, as I mentioned in that interview, the devil's in the details, we gotta. Gotta look at this wholeheartedly is what's going to be best for the community. And that's the intention, and at least I believe that's the intention of of this council is to see what's going to be best for. For the community. So this person was quite relieved and he said. We haven't made decisions on that and we're going to engage with the community as to what's, you know, best suited, at least that's how I feel. So uh, I just wanted to make that statement because I want to make sure that the community understands that decisions haven't been made. So, Mr. Simon, go ahead.
Sorry, to your worship, I just want to mention one. And this is again, sorry, I'm uh not fully with it today, I'm doing my best, but uh one really critical piece that I did forget to mention about the opting in. If we opt in, this serves as the foundation, as the floor of what the rules are. We can make the rules more strict, but we cannot make the rules more lenient. So that's a very important nuance of the legislation, a very important detail to understand. So we can't opt in and say, okay, it applies everywhere except for these spots. If we opt in, it is all or nothing for the permanent residence requirement. The only carve out that the province is currently even considering. Is resort areas that are under a master development agreement with the province. So there's potential that if we opted in. That Revelstoke Mountain Resort and all the lands covered under their M D A would be exempt from the legislation. But we would not have any authority, and it's very important to be very clear on that point. We do not have the authority to create more lenient rules in specific areas. So it's all or nothing if we opt in. Sorry, I didn't want to mention.
Well, appreciate that comment. Any other comments from council? So Counselor Devlin, and I'm gonna go to Counselor Chair.
Um, I I recommend that there's, or sorry, through the chair, I recognize that there is no recommendation on the table currently. Uh, I would see how the committee feels about as part of any potential recommendation. That we make to council that perhaps we can discuss sort of a bare bones uh public piece on exactly what this legislation would hypothetically entail, what it wouldn't. I noticed that uh the chamber has put out a little bit of a survey, it's not a lot of responses currently, but thank you to the chamber for doing that, that's uh important information. But even in the comments of that survey, there is a lot of misinformation and a lot of those comments are just. Plain wrong in the way they're interpreting it from such comments as not to get into specifics, I also don't know who filled out the survey. Such specifics as uh it wouldn't affect us because we are grandfathered in, things like that. So I would suggest that maybe as part of the communication piece behind this, at some point in the process, we put up some sort of. Bare bones, this is the cliff notes of what this would or would not entail, so that people understand. Because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about the specifics of this decision.
Thank you. Mr. Simon?
Um, through your worship to um to Counselor Devlin, that is a an excellent point, and I've uh been having chats internally. With the the corporate officer as well as, sorry, the director of corporate administration, as well as the chief administrative officer. Um, I think at the conclusion of this meeting, because there has been a monumental shift in the legislative framework, it would certainly be incumbent upon the city. To do a media release, high level overview of what it is and what we're planning to to do as a result of it, as well as. Early in the new year, um, and the the chief administrative officer and myself have been talking about this. I think it would be very prudent upon us to host a public information session. Sometime in in January or even February, when people are kind of past the holidays. And have a brief presentation from staff about what our current S P R framework is. What this legislation means, allow people to ask questions and also share their own views amongst the community as a way to kind of kick this off. It's very important in in my view, speaking from the planning staff's perspective, that we we tread slowly. And that we understand all sides of this issue before making a formal decision. So I think that would be a really good way to start it off and to get the community informed and and part of this process.
Great, appreciate that. Counselor Palmer?
Uh, Mayor Sols, I I would suggest that um. You know, possibly direct staff to do a a bit of a formal report for a potentially a. Special committee of holes just on this one item, it's it's, I think it's big enough. And there's enough implications that uh we needed a bit more education, I have lots of questions, but uh. I I think if uh. Uh, if staff were to take a look at the legislation and their understanding of the implications of one way or the other. And and bring back uh some some sort of report, uh. I'm not suggesting anything super in depth or anything, but that's so that, but so that we have a framework for some dialogue on specifics.
Sure. So I'm gonna go to to Mr. Simon, is that kind of what your intention was as far as we the request from this committee of the whole?
Uh, to your worship, yes, that is correct, and in a. Ideally, from staff's perspective, you would direct us to prepare a report outlining a process um on how we propose to. Tackle this legislation. As well as potentially if council deems it appropriate, directing us to host a public information session in early twenty twenty four. Just so that it's it's very important that we get out ahead of this.
Counselor Palmer, would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll put that motion as edited by the corporate officer on the table.
Second for that motion, Counselor Devlin. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Orlando and Counselor Stateeners?
Uh, your worship, uh, yeah, um, unfortunately, again, I'm I'm uh. Trying to give, uh, try not to talk first, so I shouldn't jump in front of the parade, but I just general comments on things. I mean, I as I understand the motion is just to prepare an information session about the legislation, not uh to. Uh, pre- present proposed legislation or proposed local uh local bylaws or changes. Just so that there's understanding, uh, informational understanding, okay? So um, as far, yeah, I'm I I'm happy to support that, to support understanding, you know, I know, uh, you know, just in terms of general comment on the the topic at hand. Uh, staff, I know right away, uh, after this, the legislation was tabled, uh, you know, I forwarded questions to staff that, uh, sixteen, I think. That they responded to, uh, in addition, staff, uh, as well as uh council members, uh, myself included, have participated in provincial. Q and A sessions with staff uh who are in front of this. Um, speaking to bill thirty five is is legislation that's uh received royal assent. But the process um for government is once, you know, the legislation, which is available to everyone to review. Is done, then they go into regulation where they actually spell out in detail how it's going to work, uh, and uh. How the details are going to work, and there's a lot left to be um. Uh, to be determined in the way those that regulation is going to work. We have, you know, the broad strokes, but we don't have the details. Um, I think, um, you know, one of the key things that I think has been presented, but we should uh. Uh, discuss or at least that I would like everyone to be aware of is that the opt in option uh for resort municipalities is. Uh, you know, for the primary residence requirement, a lot of what is uh, uh, what is uh. In the legislation applies automatically, so there's, we're opting into a limited amount of of stuff, although it is significant um decision. Um, you know, as we all know, uh, one of the concerns is not directly on the agenda when we're talking about short term rentals is housing. But I mean, that's the intent here is for housing, 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 and that's what the provincial government uh is um. Is steering us towards um, uh, is ways to increase housing uh supply. Um, I guess, uh, you know, um, one of the things I also wanted to point out is that the the. The the provincial government has set uh targets, I would describe them as for implementation that happened over the full year. So different phases of this legislation is intended to meet targets. Um, it's always a question as to whether those targets will be met or not. So um, whether you're dead against this or dead for uh dead against opting in or dead for opting in. Uh, it doesn't matter, in my opinion, uh, if we take the time to get it right, because it will not be in place, so we don't need to rush to do it this week or next week. Um, uh, we have some time to, uh, for example, see what is uh coming. Uh, in terms of uh uh regulation and actual uh, you mean even technical. Uh, requirements, you're dealing with, you know, online booking systems, uh, and uh. Et cetera, and how those are going to be coordinated and and work is going to be uh challenging to be saying. Um, I do want to emphasize, uh, although it was already said said that the province has indicated. That they are going to be seeking uh ways to exclude areas that are under master development agreements, so this is Revelstoke Mountain Resort. Um, I um, um, you know, I'm waiting to see what uh comes down of that. I mean, I I in discussions, that is my understanding that 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 is the case, I I don't know if there's been any updates on this one. Um, and yeah, I think, um, you know, uh. The other thing that the provincial government was clear on, and this is, you know, again, it's still a bit of a debate in my mind, and to including. To talking to uh to other stakeholders is, you know, the provincial staff have said this is a floor, you know? They've said that this is uh, this legislation uh will not inhibit the municipalities. Uh, ability to um add other rules uh on top of uh what is in there. Um, it will be a requirement, for example, if you opt into uh the um. Um, per the residency requirement, uh, that um, that uh primary residency requirement that you do that, but you can do other things. You can allow them or disallow them here or there or set your other rules. So they tried to be clear on that, although I've had a lot of people debate me on that, uh, and these are the kinds of things we need to get right before we move forward, because the devil isn't in detail on this type of. Uh, decision, um, so um, I'm support, happy to support, uh, um. Going together with public information session, um, I think though. Uh, the the key thing is information session and council has some uh significant uh. Uh, discussion and decision as is outlined in the report there, I believe there's three hundred and twenty noncomplying, uh, um. Uh, or so, this is in a bylaw report, uh, pro uh, single family or uh S T Rs, I should say. Uh, short term rentals, uh, that's in later down on the agenda on a bylaw compliance report, and that is not including the one, the many, many, many hundreds of them that are complying. We have a significant uh uh portion of our rental stock that is tied up in short term rentals, and we have a housing. Crisis going on and we have some uh important uh decisions to make and get right, uh, in my opinion. And again, thanks to everyone who's contributed, thanks to everyone who's uh contributed to uh uh bringing information, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, as you were in attendance there to uh. For their ongoing input, and it's great to see uh interest in in this uh file as we move forward.
Counselor Stateeners?
Um, just really briefly, um, I think, I I think it's a great framework that the province has laid out in front of us. I think this is a great opportunity for for Revelstoke to 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 do what we do best, which is a made in Revelstoke solution to this problem. Um, and using the framework that's provided by the province. Um, and that's, that's really, that's, oh, the other last comment was, um, I wanted to ask Mr. Simon, how does this kind of? Um, relay or like coincide with the um, the zoning bylaw rewrite that the city has been undertaking so far? Because I know, as you previously mentioned, there's been a a number of uh changes that have taken place in regard to zoning by the province. And I'm just wondering, how, like, how can we, you know, is there any way of of implementing some of these policies with uh the zoning bylaw rewrite that we've been already undertaken?
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship to Counselor Stateeners, that is a, that is an excellent question. And there are certainly changes in the provincial legislation that will now impact the zoning bylaw project. Um, and staff will be providing an update to council and to all stakeholders who have signed up for the zoning bylaw very shortly, because it will cause a delay with the project by, we approximate about a couple of months. But with respect to, there's two issues. If you recall from our committee of the whole discussion, it seemed like some time ago now on the zoning bylaw. Um, there's two issues that staff recommend leaving out of the comprehensive zoning bylaw update. The first one is short term rental. We don't, the zoning bylaw being updated is such a crucial piece. It is, it is staff's recommendation that we have these travel in parallel and not merge them. Because we don't want the public hearing for the zoning bylaw to turn into a public hearing on short term rental and nothing else. The changes in the zoning bylaw are too important to get through, to have it be cannibalized by one issue, and then the other issue with the zoning bylaw is. Not making any substantial changes to the development regulations downtown in terms of maximum building height, maximum density, things of that nature. Until we do a formal downtown plan, which is budgeted, I believe, for twenty twenty five. So those are the two issues that we recommend leaving out of the zoning bylaw project and running them, you know, a little bit parallel or sequentially.
Follow up, counsel?
No, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other uh comments on the motion on that there? Counselor Wilson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sols. Uh, just one question to staff. Um, if we're talking about not opting in, um, are we allowed through policy and bylaw to have the prior residence requirement um to operate a short term rental?
Mr. Simon?
But through your worship, yes, so we already have one area in the city where we have a. We call it the permanent resident onsite operator rule. So there's fifty nine properties adjacent to Hay Road, as well as properties that are zoned C two. Where if you want to operate a short term rental, you need to be residing on site, either in your primary dwelling unit or in your secondary dwelling unit being a secondary suite. So we already have that rule, and we could look at expanding it to other areas now with this legislation and the changes in the lawful, nonconforming requirements. So there's, there's a lot to unpack here, but it does, the way staff are viewing it right now is it gives us some additional tools. Even if we choose not to opt in to reevaluate our short term rental, and I do want to note our policy on short term rental. You know, we we timed it very well from council and staff side. Um, it called for revisiting these regulations in fall slash winter twenty twenty three, so the timing is is impeccable and it works really, really, really well.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counselor Palmer, one last uh comment?
Yeah, yeah, that's the problem, the last comment. The uh, just, just one question uh on the um. The consultation with local government and and I'll try not to go too far now, but how much did the province? Uh, consult with local governments uh on the legislation specific? I'm not talking all the general stuff, but specifically on what they were proposing.
Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, staff had two meetings in early twenty twenty three with provincial staff from the Ministry of Housing. Giving feedback on what some of our challenges were currently with the implementation of short term rental regulations at the local level.
So just to follow up, because I'm drilling to something specific here.
Sure.
So did they present? What they were going to be proposing in legislate this legislation? For your feedback on specifics?
And I'm gonna go to Mr. Attia when you're done, Mr. Simon.
Uh, through your worship, no. So the province generally, not only with this legislation, but as well as the uh recent legislation announced through bill forty four and bill forty six. They keep their cards pretty close to their chest. I will note that staff in Revelstoke have done an excellent job at advocating and trying to get involved as much as we can. Staff were involved in infrastructure meetings back in April in Vancouver. To go through the changes through the the infill legislation that was announced and make recommendations. But generally speaking, our experience on engaging with the province isn't, here's the legislation, pick it apart and give us your feedback. It's more so exploring kind of in a preliminary consultation way. What are the challenges you're experiencing, and then the province gathers that feedback and implements legislation that they feel will address those challenges.
Mr. Attia, you had comment?
Yeah, I'm I'm not one to jump into defending the province, so it, um, don't take it that way, but but uh. The last year at uh the U B C M Housing Conference, the province did present uh outside Whistler and and all of the uh. Municipal staff, their framework for short term rental regulation. And it does seem like one of the rare, to my, in my experience, uh, situations where. Where cities did drive a lot of the legislative changes. And so. Whether the the extent to to which they're implemented in a way that suits a smaller community is still potentially a question. Um, but I think that some of the the bigger questions uh regarded by that may seem to. Be, seem to at least see the the. The problem that was being posed.
I've got two more hands up. So councillor Orlando, short response if you're in mind, and councillor Palmer.
Yeah, I also thank you for the chair referencing the past UVCM meeting. The city of Revelstoke, by resolution of this council, did send a resolution to, which is a lobbying, you know, effort to, to the provincial government, asking them to do many of the things that are listed in this bylaw, including central registration, you know, increased enforcement tools. I can't remember the wording of our legislation, but we specifically asked for many of the things that are reflected in this legislation. So I would just say that, you know, that we need a, yeah, we need a, I guess it would be advisable, in my opinion, if we make sure we keep in the same lane on what we're asking for. And that's specifically what we were asked for. And I just want to clarify, the resolution is just information report to the next, to the next council meetings. I'll correct Mr. Simon on what you're going to be doing moving forward. Is that right?
Through your worship, just, I guess for clarification on my side, I believe it would be for January 2024. And informations in early 2024 as well, just for that, make sure I don't start getting reports drafted for December 12th.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll see the reports at council before that information session and approving it.
Councillor Palmer.
Thank you. So just in response to that, and I know you want to wrap this up, but I do need to make some comments on that. The province, actually, just as a statement beforehand, I, this, this is not a political stand. I'm probably one of the most partisan, nonpartisan people around. So this is not a conservative versus liberal kind of discussion. The, if anything, on some of the heavy-handed aspects of this feels very, very much more so cred than NDP. But that's not what this is about. The, on short-term rentals, it's been a big issue. It's been a big issue in Revelstoke for a decade or more, a big issue. And in this council, the previous council, the council with you and councillor Orlando we're on, have grappled with this for, for many years. There's been lots of controversy and we implemented some really good tools and some proactive tools that Revelstoke has put in, including the residency, trying to get, you know, maximum in those sort of restricted areas. It's been with lots of controversy on, on, on the whole, you know, what those tools, where short-term rentals belong. But we have been, in many ways, the leaders on grappling with those issues in real ways. And at the end of the day, not everybody agrees with where we've landed and we still have problems. And yes, the province has responded to not only the Revelstoke's request to have more tools to have regulatory and ability to implement regulatory aspects. And there's elements of that in here. However, by throwing the legislation on with some pretty heavy-handed things and take, including taking the rights of individuals away, reversing legislation, taking those rights, that, that is largely unprecedented and very concerning. And so this is the, 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 the heavy-handed side that I think that we need to be careful with. Yes, don't fall in love with all the good stuff that's potentially in here and throw away individual rights. And I think that's a really fundamental thing. And also, I'd just like to flag with the current government, and it was the same with the previous government, with the Liberals, you know, putting in, trying to implement stuff. So for example, on, on affordable housing in our community, they made promises, not this past time, but the previous time, the provincial legislation of affordable housing. They didn't even come close to meeting that. Fourth Avenue in, in Revelstoke, how long's that been going since the applications were going in? And we've bent over backwards to help the province get that thing built. And they still haven't put the shovel, after years, haven't put the shovel in the ground. The province, this, this government has bought stuff out of, that was, I'm not saying the condition was good, but is taking stuff out of the, the public sector, Columbia Gardens and the apartments on Front Street, taking those out of the market. And they, you know, years and years goes by, they've dumped tons of money and raised rents and haven't helped that. And then they're, they're going to go under the disguise that they've created new affordable housing. They aren't helping us. And then they have the audacity to blame local governments. And that's where we're, they, they're taking away rights of the public through public hearings. They're wanting to implement that so that there isn't the public input on how we do things. And that's what I'm really, really concerned about as we go ahead. Yes, short-term rentals, we wanted those tools that we talked about. And if that's what this was about, but that's what I'm really concerned about is the rights of individuals and the rights of communities to mold our communities that we think is, see as right as a community, you know, for ourselves. And that's the biggest concern I have.
Good. All right. Appreciate those comments. I want to just confirm the motion that's on the table. So, Ms. Russo, can you read that back to me, please?
Your worship, I was going to ask you to read that back to me. There's been much discussion, so clarity would be much appreciated. Perhaps Mr. Simon can assist.
Simon, can you assist?
So through your worship, what I've, excellent discussion today. Staff are really keen to continue working with council on this, so thank you very much. This is really great feedback to have. What I've heard from council is that you're supportive of seeing a report at a committee of the whole session in early January 2024, and that subsequently after that information report has been received, that would detail how staff proposed to tackle this in terms of bringing forward amendments to our regulations as well as public engagement, that we host a public information session that isn't soliciting feedback, but rather just informing the community of what these changes are and what our current regulatory framework is. Is that, is that accurate of the nature of the discussion so far and where council is looking to go with this?
I'm going to go to you, councillor Palmer, because you had said you were comfortable with that. That wording similar to what you feel is appropriate?
Yeah, he's almost as bad as a politician. Does, does a corporate officer have some more succinct wording?
I could try. So that the Bill thirty-five discussions come back to a committee of the whole meeting in January 2024, and then a public information session be scheduled.
That's exactly what I said.
That's what I thought.
All right, good. Now, before we go on that, councillor Russo, you had your hand up. You want to make comment?
Yes, I thought we'd ask to have it be a special committee of the whole, so we have the entirety to talk about this issue.
Good call. Yes.
And to your worship, if I may, if, if the resolution could specify that staff prepare a report for committee of the whole discussion?
Yes.
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 Yep, we've got that. All right, I am going to.
Super quick detail question, why January for the report? Why not December?
I believe it was to allow staff time to prepare.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, I've already.
I don't want to set my toes.
I'm your mayor today.
Now that that response.
All is in favor. Opposed. No motions carried. All right, thank you, Mr. Simon. Appreciate that. We are going to go on to communications and third quarter report from fire department. And go from there and then I'm going to ask you a question. Chief Russo.
Good afternoon, councillor. I hope to keep this brief. I'll try not to be the politician. Can you see my screen? The brakes are off. Who uses those? Me, apparently.
Can you see the screen? Oh, you got it in front of you.
I've been in front of me.
Chief Russo, it's your, your show doing this correctly.
So third quarter report, a little bit more timely than the last one with all the summer break. There, just wanted to highlight some stuff for you. Our third quarter fire inspections doing well. We've got, I believe it's a hundred and twenty-four fire inspections that have been done for that. We've had a couple of changes to our fees and bylaw there, so hopefully that will keep going up. Property losses from fires, those are really hard to get a good handle on right away because insurance companies don't provide us that information. I am not a, an estimator, so I don't have the skill and expertise to, to provide those numbers for you. But it's, it's up there in the hundreds of thousands as well. We've had five recordable fires in this quarter. One was a residential structure fire at Johnson Heights, vehicle fire, the commercial structure fire. Trying to remember what that one was. Campground? No, it wasn't. Mobile, mobile home? It wasn't the campground. It might come to me if I'm. I get in front of council, I get a little nervous. Several fire drills and elementary school visits to the firehouse. We had a lot of kids come in over the summer as well. We had another one coming this morning as well, so that now COVID is over. That's quite popular with the, the school kids and the teachers. It's a, it's a great day trip out of the, out of the classroom for the kids. First pression division, our numbers are in the sevens across the board there. Low to high sevens for response time targets. Area B, outside of the city boundaries, still the same at twelve and a half minutes. And our incidents are up, a hundred and twenty-four calls this quarter. And you can see we've, we've got six calls in area B, twelve road rescues. We've had some significant highway crashes over the summer there and into the fall. We had quite a number of commercial fire alarms come in. A number of them, if my numbers are correct, five have received or will be receiving an invoice for excessive false alarms as to your goal salon. It resets every January one, and so you get those, those three first free alarms. And then after that, the third subsequent fire alarms that are, if they're on false for legitimate reasons. If, if, for example, the school, if a child goes and pulls a fire alarm at the school, that's not a failure to maintain the system or stuff like that. How do you, how do you go to the school and say, you know, you're going to pay for this kid's misbehavior? So we try and do an education piece on that. It's the negligence for the fire alarms are not being maintained properly or being disregarded. You know, if a particular building is not maintaining their alarm, no, maybe it does cost the city to respond, but you also put your, your residents out, whether it's a hotel or an apartment. So we want to make sure that those are being properly maintained. So this is about the time of year when we do see those false alarm charges start to come out. Training highlights, the training division's been pretty busy over the, the summer fall, despite the fact that most people are trying to take some holidays. We try and keep them engaged in training as well. And so we have, I checked on these numbers here because it was, I wasn't sure. We are ten oh one firefighter, one oh two, we have twenty firefighters that are qualified to that. So that includes our career staff and myself as well. I'm also a ten oh one qualified. EVO is emergency vehicle operator, there's twenty-seven people within the department. So that includes myself as well. I've got a class one commercial and I've got emergency vehicle drivers as well. Thirty-seven sessions, sorry, hours in thirteen sessions. I did mention, when I spoke to the last quarter, previous committee of the whole, I was going to be bringing forward that we've lost another number of members. And I thought I should try and explain this firefighter recruitment and retention chart a little bit because I got confused as well. The first quarter, we started the year off January one with twenty-six. And in that first quarter, we had four resign for various reasons. We ended that quarter with twenty-two members, so that's a fifteen percent negative change. In quarter two, we had started out with twenty-two, we didn't hire any, we had two resign. We ended that quarter with two, so now we're additionally nine percent down just for that quarter. So at that point, we did an emergency recruitment intake. We had, we had fourteen people go through the, the process. We ended up onboarding ten in July fifth was their start date. And so of those ten, three have quit. They weren't able to, to keep up with the program or they, something else came along. Maybe it wasn't what they thought it was going to be. And we lost another three of the previous firefighters, so we're down twelve already this year. So even though that says that we're up nineteen percent, the total loss this year so far is twelve. So that's on the right-hand side of the column, our experience levels are continuing to drop. So that's, that's not a good thing. We're going to have to do another recruitment in January because we can't, we can't have two classes going at the same time. We've, this, this existing recruitment is still in training. So they haven't, they haven't completed that, we just don't have the resources to do two recruitment classes at the time, at the same time. Emergency management, we had some more staff complete their ICS instant command level twos, twos and three hundreds. And three also started out with their first, first level one hundred. So that's continuing to build our capacity on that. Not too much for illness and sickness or injuries, which is good, that's always a good sign. And just to follow up on the, the report for the ladder truck being out of service as well for those carryover, carry it there. What else have we got here? And we continue to do the child safety seat, child passenger seat. Inspections for expectant moms and dads and, and those new kids coming along. It's, it's important for people to have their car seats installed properly and checked. So we'll either help them with that initial installation or we'll have them check to make sure it's properly installed. So if you do get into a fender bender or a more serious crash, the child seat is going to stay in place and the child's going to be stayed strapped in that as well. That's it for myself. I'll disconnect so that, follow the rules. Yeah, so what questions does council have for me before I wrap up for the day?
I just want to say thanks for, for what you're doing. It's nice to see those things about the child safety seats. As, as a grandparent, I've been, had to go through that a few years ago to figure out how in the heck you put these things in a car to make sure that, that you're safe. When I was a kid, they just threw us in the back of the station wagon. My parents put the arm up and hoped like heck we could go through the front window.
You got a station wagon? I got a truck bed.
So that station wagon is just a closed truck bed. And I, and I want to compliment your staff on the driving abilities. I, I went down to the fire, fire yard to have a look at my car and it's on its side. And I had to look at it and go like, well, somebody's pretty talented with how they drive. Anyway, just even thank you for what you do. Any comments or questions from councillor? Councillor Chair?
Thanks, Worship. Through the chair, I just want to note that I'm very concerned with the recruitment or intention numbers that we're seeing here. And I'd like to know what's being done to mitigate the loss or what Chief Rosie feels can be done to improve our service levels. Or even maintain our current service levels.
Through your worship, I think we all know that.
Through your worship, I think we all know that volunteer firefighting is becoming a lost cause. We're not the only ones that are having this problem. It's spilling over now also to police and ambulance, they're having similar problems. But we're talking about volunteers, people just aren't doing it anymore. You can see from the numbers that we're trying to keep our numbers up, but it doesn't help us deal with the seniority and experience, the capabilities. If it were up to me, if that's the question you're asking, I'd hire more firefighters. And, but it's not up to me. And so we've had some long, deep conversations about what to do. And we need a plan to move forward. And so we have engaged to Ms. Parliament as well as Ms. Moore to take that service level review, that master plan, to help guide us, to guide council on how to move forward. In the interim between then and now, I don't have magic ball to-
I do have a series of follow-up questions.
Okay, so go ahead and ask one of the questions and then I'll go to council's table and just then come back to you if I can.
Can you, thanks, through the chair, can you, Chief Rosie, can you tell us what's happening across the province in regards to recruitment issues? To give us some perspective on what's happening that some of us may not know about for full-time?
Through the chair, I think we're all competing for the same pool of people. So whether it's volunteer or full-time firefighters, there's only so many people that have an interest in this to go around. And one thing to keep in mind, like the larger cities are hiring. And so the mid-sized cities, even Kamloops, had to cancel their competition because the quality of applicants that they were getting was not sufficient to meet their needs for that size city. So we're all having the same problem and getting those people out is, I've said it before, recruiting is easy, but keeping them is the hard part. We want to recruit solid people. And we're, all departments are competing for the same pool of people. And we don't have much to offer other than whiskey hill.
Has a city the size of Kamloops, in the history, ever canceled, sorry, in your known history, ever canceled a recruitment class due to lack, low numbers or low qualified turnout as we're seeing now?
Through your worship, I'm not qualified to answer that particular question, but I think it does need clarification. They canceled the competition for qualified firefighters, not firefighters to go through training. So that is the only difference that I would say there.
Council's statement, does she have a question?
Well, question and a comment. I think, I think we're getting a little off topic from the quarterly report from the fire chief and I appreciate his time. And in the sake of keeping this meeting to somewhat of a brief one. You know, I understand the concerns. You know, I think council chair's questions in regards to recruitment and retention, that's a long, like it's a problem that's across the board. I've seen it, you know, in my old municipal fire department, you know, and we see it down here. Volunteers, you know, I think communities are hurting across the board in these economic conditions. You see it at the community kitchen, you see it in the fire department, people just don't have the time or the capacity to get their time away for free right now. So, you know, I do encourage the chief to continue with the recruitment retention. He has my support as a counselor to do so. And at this time, that's all.
Council chair, do you have another question?
Thanks, I appreciate that, through the chair, the statementers. Maybe I'll ask a bit more pointed questions. What can be done to lower response time to something within the NFPA standards?
Through the chair, the service level for the NFPA seventeen ten response time of five minutes, twenty seconds is a combination of fire department resource distributions, which is where the fire hall is in the city. How many apparatus you have in that fire hall or fire halls? And how many staff you have available to respond within the shoot time of sixty seconds from the reception of the call? So the, when dispatch hands off the call to us, shoot time, sixty seconds to get that truck with the four firefighters out the door. Another four minutes of travel time to the scene. So that's where you look at where your distribution of resources is, your location, your fire hall, and how far you can get that truck in that four minutes. Gives you a sort of a radius around here. It's not a complete radius or a perfect radius because travel times, bridges, traffic time of day and stuff like that. So that would be a very boiled down version of that.
Okay, I think most of my questions, the rest of my questions are going to be more finance related, but I appreciate your time in coming in and answering our questions and giving us a triple.
Good, all right. Thank you, Chief Rosie. Oh, Councilor Landy, you have a comment, question?
Ah, your worship, just a really quick one. Thank you, Chief Rosie, for the quarterly report, I do appreciate it, highlighting what's happening with the department. And I just want to make a special note to thank volunteers who serve the community, day in and day out in this community. And I do want to acknowledge that as far as my understanding is, volunteerism is challenged across the board, not just firefighting here. And we've had demographic changes as well, but I just want to make sure, I want to emphasize that what those men and women do to serve and protect our community is very much appreciated and I acknowledge the circumstances that might exist.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, chief, appreciate that. All right, let's move on to parks and recreational culture, third quarter report. Mr. Nato is online. Thank you, counselor, appreciate your time today.
Thank you, your worship. I will just briefly highlight some of the events and programming activities that occurred during the thirty-third quarter, which encompassed July, August and September. So during the summer months, we focused on a lot of youth programming, the popular skate camp, swim, movie and pizza night, some science camps, and hosted a summer day camp with community connections in the facility. Through the aquatic center, we had our annual shutdown in September, which lasted for three weeks. The arena operations started up towards the end of August with some different sprint, or some different hockey camps happening in the facility. And then in our park spaces, we had a few events. We hosted the RCMP musical ride, the farmer's market started up. Rebby paddle fest was a new event for the community this year. It was really well attended and made good use of the space down on Powerhouse Road. We had the Little Bear Soccer Tournament, which saw a really high turnout in teams this year. And we had the annual Luna Arts Festival happening in September. If council has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions for Mr. Nato? No comments, no questions, council? All right, Mr. Nato, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to bylaw compliance updates for 2023. Mr. Gip?
Thank you, worship. I do have a brief presentation here. So this is just to provide a brief update as far as the status of bylaw compliance that our department as it sits. This data goes from January until October fifteenth, was when we started preparing this report. So it is obviously not a complete year. I just wanted to give everybody a little bit of a snapshot of what's been going on in the bylaw compliance department and just a general update as well as some general stats on some specific items that I know council has expressed some interest in. So again, this is just kind of our beginning of our annual report here. Our general, so right now this is our current service levels. It consists of myself as the building bylaw services manager. We have bylaw compliance supervisor, which is a one full FTE. And then we have one additional FTE as a bylaw compliance officer and then a point six FTE. And currently we get bylaw clerical support for seven hours a week currently as a budget. So throughout 2023, bylaw services has continued to monitor the bylaw compliance and respond to the complaints and bylaw relating inquiries in an efficient, timely manner using a fair and respectful and consistent approach. Some of the highlights from this year would be, in June, bylaw services was relocated from the courthouse over to the development services department. So they now live within the development services department. In September, we were happy to welcome in an additional bylaw officer. He is covering our medical leave position currently, but we are very happy to have him and he is doing a great job. In October there, we were added, as we spoke about briefly earlier, we were added to the bylaw adjudication process. They noted that the schedule was amended to include Revelstoke. So that is a monumentous thing for us to achieve. And throughout summer there, we did have our seasonal priorities that consist of animal control infractions, business license infractions, noise infractions, watering infractions, parks infractions. Again, specifically, we dealt with quite a bit of overnight camping within the parks. And then throughout the year, we've always been dealing with the short-term rental. So this can give you a general idea of our, this is based on our complaint software, C Click Fix. This is the top eight registered complaints within C Click Fix for this year. And again, this is based on the C Click Fix submissions through our website. This is not including any of the proactive enforcement that bylaw does, but this is based on the actual complaints. So as you can see, parking is of course the highest one of all of them, followed by animal control and then watering and then camping. So this summer, we received quite a large number of animal complaints, animal control complaints. And our officers were designating quite a bit of their time towards that specific item. And again, so here, just kind of a general snapshot, bylaw issued, I get to the October fifteenth there, they issued four hundred and sixty-four bylaw warning tickets. And so that is not full issues of a ticket, that is just the official warning. There was two thousand one hundred and forty-six registered C Click Fix complaints. And so that is, again, that is the submission of complaints to the city for different items. That does not include the proactive enforcement that bylaw department was taking care of. And then there's two hundred and twenty-nine bylaw tickets issued. And as you can see, the largest number of all of them is actually the traffic enforcement. And again, that's specifically, they're mainly around parking, which obviously is a big issue here. We have forty-four water regulation infraction tickets, twenty-eight municipal parks and two animal control. So as many of you are aware, as we did talk about this earlier in the summer here, we did have unusually high water consumption rates this year. That along with the minimal rainfall and the higher temperatures. We did see drought across the province. And so as a result of that, we were, we did have to implement stage two watering restrictions. So bylaw services were requested to assist with the education first campaign on that, which resulted in sixty warnings and forty watering infraction tickets issued during that time. And that is again, specifically to the time with the restriction. So here's a comparison for this year compared to, or sorry, yeah, this year compared to last, as far as the number of watering complaints we received. As you see, this year was again significantly higher. This is a common trend we've been seeing is that we are starting to see more complaints coming in compared to previous years. And then the also important short-term rentals. So throughout 2023, the bylaw compliance department has seen a significant increase in calls for service, so complaints related to the short-term rentals. And these complaints range from a variety of different topics, everything from non-compliance to zoning, business licensing, noise infractions, parking, a whole slew of different issues. And so due to that number that we have complaints we've been receiving, we did have to create a classification system based on the level of severity of the type of complaint that was being received, prioritizing life safety above all, obviously, and then going from there. So we are currently working through, our officers are currently investigating nine short-term rentals. And we do have a larger number of them, obviously, that we are still working through. And so here to Councilor Landy's comment earlier, we actually do have approximately three hundred and twenty short-term rentals within Revelstoke. That does include both the compliant and the non-compliant. And that is the number that we are actually aware, only the number that we are aware of. And so that data is collected through our software called Host Compliance. And so again, that number will not be one hundred percent as far as the total number, but that is about what we are aware of, about the three hundred and twenty. And so we are working with a large number of these ones, trying to gain and then maintain the compliance. And that could include everything from the, again, noise infractions, parking infractions, operating outside of their license, things like that. And then again, just to put it into perspective, as far as the registered complaints, as you can see, we have seen a large increase here again on the number of complaints we're receiving. There was a day where we did receive around twenty in a single day. Business licensing, we have, we were requested to assist with a large number of non-compliant business licensing. And that included people who are not up to date on their business license as far as paying their today fees. And then businesses that had closed but failed to notify us. And then, yeah, businesses that had relocated and failed to get their, update their license to reflect the new address. So bylaw services being working with both the finance department and development services to help bring that number back down significantly lower. As you can see, we're sitting approximately two hundred and eighty-two business licenses on that list and that number is rapidly shrinking. So that is a project that will continue throughout the year and we're looking at ways to change the processes or improve the processes, sorry, to prevent that number from getting up that high again. So in summary, the City of Revelstoke bylaw compliance department continues to serve the community. One of the big things, as we've kind of touched on earlier, I would just like as a final comment here, we did talk about the bylaw adjudication and limitations with Bill thirty-five not increasing this. This is something that we would recommend, we would love the support of council on when lobbying with UBCM about increasing this, the adjudication ticket amounts to reflect similar to what the MTIs did regarding, even if it was specific to short-term rentals. Obviously, five hundred dollars is the cap on that and that does create some limitations. But at this point, that's not being discussed. The province hasn't tabled any legislation for that. So we would welcome any support from council in regards to that with lobbying the Office of the Attorney Generals to get that change.
Okay, they have made comments. One part of the letters that I've received is possibly going, allowing us to go with a thousand to three thousand dollars per occurrence per day. We get to see how that's going to roll out of course, but so we're hopeful that that's indeed going to be something that will allow us to do, overlook that.
And so on that, they have announced that they will increase the municipal ticketing from one thousand to the three thousand. But we do not have that deadline quite yet in our conversations with the province. They did state that is coming very soon. That is one of their first items that they're going to have put into place. But they have not tabled that amendment quite yet. So we are expecting to see that here in the next month or so, at which point we will be bringing an amendment to the MTI bylaw to council for adoption.
So when they go to the MTI, will that automatically roll over to adjudication as well? No, it wasn't, that's where you need our help.
That's correct. So they did amend the, within Bills thirty-five, in the bottom of it, you talk about amendments to the community charter and the offense act. And they have, the province has referenced the changes that are coming to the municipal tickets, but it is only specific to the municipal tickets. It is different legislation and different ticketing systems. So in our conversations with the province, they did specifically state that there's not been a consideration at this point to up the amounts for the adjudication ticketing. But they suggested that we lobby to the Office of the Attorney General to consider that as it is outside of the Ministry of Housing.
Okay, so I'll give some thought to that and we'll talk a little more around council table, but maybe we can motivate them with the letter. Appreciate that. Any Councilor Landy questions? I think Councilor Lucio.
Through the chair, a couple of questions. The first is on actual number of tickets, fines issued for watering infractions. It gives it, the report gives a different number in two different places. So I'm just checking which one is correct. And the second question, again, through the chair is, I believe the report doesn't indicate how many fines have been issued for short-term rental non-compliance. And I'm wondering, have there been or not, or why?
Through the chair, as far as the watering tickets, so there are two different numbers on there. Okay, through the chair, uh, as far as the watering tickets, so there are two different numbers on there. The forty four watering regulation tickets is for the full year. And then the, the reference in the watering portion of it was specific to during her watering restrictions. So those numbers will be different. We just wanted to highlight the fact that, um, we did, we tried to push an education first campaign. Uh, that was the main directive with it was to push a big education first campaign to the public for the watering restrictions. And that is why we tried, that we were issuing more warnings over tickets. So the forty four is over the course of a whole year.
Okay.
And then as far as for the number of short term rentals, um, I can definitely get to that number. There is always limitations as, as we've previously talked about when it comes to, uh, issuance of the MTIs for, uh, short term rentals specifically. The majority of the short term rentals that we have been working with, we have been, been able to gain compliance through, uh, uh, alternative means rather than just ticketing. I am a true believer of ticketing is a tool, it is not the end all. It is not the first one we use. We do try to talk to them, we do try to work with them, uh, which is another reason why we're wanting to deal with the adjudication process because that does allow, uh, the means of a compliance agreement versus, uh, going through, uh, numerous ticketing events. We could then turn to a compliance agreement in place of, uh, issuing additional fines. So, uh, I could, if, if counsel like, we could definitely get that exact number. But at this point, the majority of the, the short term rentals that we gain compliance will not have the involuntary compliance through, uh, conversations.
Thank you. All right, shit. Counselor Lucy.
Uh, thank you, Mirzal. Just one question about the, uh, bylaw tickets that are issued of the two hundred and twenty nine. Do we know how many have been paid in full?
Um, I could get that number for council. Again, this is a limitation when it comes to collecting of municipal tickets and ticketing as a whole. Um, this is another thing we, we'd love the support of council on, uh, UBCM is lobbying to change how we can collect those so that it can be applied as, as referenced earlier to, uh, individuals on title. Uh, currently our only means for collection, as, uh, I did reference briefly earlier, is a payment hearing or through, uh, collections.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Statementist and Counselor Orlando, and then, uh, I have something to just talk about briefly in camera. Uh, Counselor Statementist.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the report. And then I wanted to also ask a question in regards to the short term rentals. Are you seeing any trends in regards to the complaints, whether they're legal, nonlegal types of complaints?
Through the chair, yes, uh, we, we are seeing some significant trends. A lot of them happen to be, uh, related to noise, parking and then, uh, operating outside of their license. Uh, there is a, we, since we do receive such a large number of the complaints, they do vary substantially, but it does involve, uh, like I, I did reference there, uh, businesses, there's like short term rentals that are operating outside of their license allowances and then also noncompliance where they just do not have a business license or they're just not permitted to.
Counselor Orlando.
Uh, your worship, uh, just following up on the comments that, uh, Mr. Hughes made. Uh, I was wondering, a request of a, a corporate officer, um, since there was a request for lobbying, uh, at UBCM for changes, can we add that to the list of, uh, things we might consider once we get to the point to open up what we're going to lobby at for next year?
Most definitely.
Thank you so much.
All right. Counselor Cherry, you have a comment?
I believe that needs to go, you lobby to Silver as well?
Yeah, Silver, yeah.
Thanks.
Good. All right, I would like to go, uh, in camera, return to section ninety point one D of the community charter to discuss security property of the municipality. So I would like to, uh, Evan, Cindy and Kenny to stay for that brief verbal discussion before we adjourn for the day.
We have a motion for that, please.
Oh, sorry, yes. Counselor Statementist and Counselor Orlando, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Don't end because Julie needs to be on there.
Did you want to go it out?
No.
No, she will just stop the stream.